All council members are in, we will commence the April 21st. The city of West Sacramento, the city of city council and West Sacramento redevelopment successor agency and West Sacramento financing authority. And tonight, we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Mrs. Laura Legaki, and just a little background about Ms. Legaki, Ms. Legaki here tonight, she's an incredible volunteer as a nurse. She's been giving vaccinations on the front lines at our, at our West Sac clinics events, and she's also a Yolo County court appointed special advocate for our foster youth. And as a court appointed special advocate for our foster youth, we have about 150 of our foster youth on a waitlist who are still waiting for somebody like Laura to spend a little bit of time with them, maybe an hour a week, so that they can get to know the youth and get to know what their interests are and help them be represented as a, you know, with the judge. And so that's a very important role for our foster youth. So we're looking for more volunteers. And with that, Laura, thank you for being a Casa volunteer and a nurse, being our frontline nurse here in West Sacramento. And, you know, we know it's a rewarding experience for you after everything you shared. Could you please lead us with the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor, I sure can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to the governor's executive order N dash two nine dash two O, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. And we will have live public comment here on tonight's meeting, and we will also continue to receive written comments. And all comments received by six o'clock will be provided to city council and posted on the website. To provide a live comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom hyper linked on the Zoom with the meeting website or the phone number listed on the city's website. And I will request public comment during item one A prior to the first item on consent and after the staff presentation for any other item on the agenda. Once I have announced the public comment period, if you would like to make a comment, please do one of the following. If you are joining the meeting by Zoom, press the raise hand button, or if you're joining the meeting by phone, press star nine. When it is your turn to comment, the clerk will call you by name or phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes. The clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. And once your three minutes or your public comment has ended, you will be muted again. You may also join by phone at dialing one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and dial the ID code nine two zero nine five six four two nine three five, and the passcode is zero zero four two six four. And no actions were taken in closed session, which was the discussion related to the Police Managers Association contract negotiation and the California Voting Rights Act. Next item on the agenda is item one A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda, and council members are prohibited from discussing on any matter presented into this item. And Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or any live public comment requests?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no speakers, but we did receive written comments for one A.
Okay, thank you. And next item are council member communications. So under item one B, are there any communications among our council members? Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to pull items two and three.
I'm sorry, councilmember Alcala, that's our consent agenda. We're not there yet. These are, these are council communications, which are our assignments from our meetings in the past two weeks. And I don't, I thought maybe you have attended a meeting in the past two weeks.
Yes, I have, Mayor, but one of the meetings I did attend was a closed session meeting with the Yolo Salano County Air Management Board, but that was closed session.
Okay, thank you so much for that update. And no other person. So councilmember Ledesma, do you have any updates?
I do. Good evening, everyone. Well, this is going to be a little lengthy because I've actually had two meetings with YCTD and a few closed sessions in the time, the brief time between last session and our last council meeting, this one. And so I'm going to try to keep up with, we had a regular YCTD meeting back on Monday the 12th. And in that, in that meeting, we finally and put a bow on the comprehensive operational analysis. We finished, the staff finished that work, and we approved the final analysis that went from the board. It was unanimous, so that was done. And we also started to look at the toilet your ride, micro transit, and looking at performance standards for that. So that was the August, I'm sorry, April 12th meeting. And then just this past week, we had a couple of closed sessions between. Should be noted, I think everyone's aware that we have YCTD longtime executive director, Terry Bassett retired, and his last day with, as we know the last times, last day was April 2nd. And in that time, we had also ratified Jose Perez as the acting interim, acting executive director. And on this past Monday, the 12th, I'm sorry, 19th, we, the YCT board met again in the special session, and that session, a familiar face for all of us here in West Sacramento. We approved a management consulting agreement with our own, our favorite Marty Tuttle, former city manager of West Sacramento, has agreed to take on a management consulting firm, working with the board and working with YCTD staff on a limited basis for the next few months, evaluating that and helping to establish some sort of our next steps with YCTD and that full-time executive director and the direction we'll go. So it's a great pleasure that we voted unanimously to bring Marty in. Marty has, if you don't know Marty, if you didn't have a chance to work with Marty at the city or know his background, he is steeped in, in transportation and transit issues. In addition, his work here in West Sacramento, from his work at Secog, where he really turned out from a small little agency to turn it into the powerhouse influential agency that we have now overseeing millions of dollars and trends of dollars and was the primary driver behind the blueprint initiative, which is guiding land use decisions across the region. He also had a stint with Caltrans, and before that, he was with the Solano Transportation District. So he brings us the wealth of knowledge into the district, which the board really needs and looks at as we think about the next iteration or where we're going with YCTD. It's the, the district's doing well. It's like every other transit district, but Marty is coming in to help us provide some direction and some leadership. So that's my update on YCTD.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ledesma. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 14th, 2021, I served with the Board of Directors to, for the Regional Sanitation Board, and we received a budget workshop for the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and Sacramento County Sanitation District Financing Authority. For fiscal year 2021, we did get an overview of the conditions of our operating fund and our capital fund and our reserves. And also essentially talked about the operating budget, which is essentially 154.8 million. The one thing to note is that we had a recent region, excuse me, a recent meeting with our city council to talk about regional sanitation as a contributing agency, and that will begin shortly. Remember that for many years, we have been the billing agency, and we've incurred the costs of doing that billing as part of our regular utilities. But now Regional SAN will be reimbursing us and other contributing agencies to the tune of about a million dollars, not, not to us specifically, but that'll be the cost of regional sanitation. The good news, though, is that Regional SAN has had previously committed to keeping rates unchanged at 37 a month for a single, the equivalent of a single family dwelling. And due to good fiscal accountability, low interest rates on these long-term obligations, as well as paying off obligations ahead of time, we're very, we're been in a really good place and do not anticipate any rate increases, which, you know, many of us see rate increases a variety of different ways for our utilities, or you name it. But I'm really happy to report that Regional SAN has done a fantastic job, and we won't be seeing anything in the near future. In addition, I, I did attend the Economic and Government Affairs meeting with the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce.
Did she freeze, or is it me?
Not you.
Ah, she froze.
She froze.
He'll give her 30 more seconds to see how that works. She might have to turn off her camera. You're now unfrozen.
Well, this is a story of my life. This is what happens quite a bit. So you'll see me periodically stopping my video. I'm sorry, folks, but you don't need to see my active face moving, but I'm almost done. I'm just going to say that the Economic and Government Affairs meeting for the West Sac Chamber, and they discussed homelessness and matters involving residents here who suffer from mental illness. And the discussion of 1542, which is in our public comment from the chamber, it's a bill that's sponsored by Assemblyman McCarty that would support residential, secured residential treatment for those suffering from substance abuse who have been convicted of a qualifying drug motivated felony crimes. Essentially, the motivation would be that the person can engage in the secured residential facilities and get treatment that they need in order to curb their addiction. And in return, the benefit would expungement of the felonious conviction. I actually wrote my own independent letter of 1542, not representing the city of West Sacramento, but only as an independent. But I, I think that this is a positive, it would be positive for our city, both as from my personal position with my profession, but also because we need to find innovative ways to treat folks who have chronic addiction. That's the only way that we can, I guess, curb the trends that we have been seeing. So that's it for me. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Roscoe. And unfortunately, the bill has a significant amount of opposition levied against because of the type of the substance abuse treatment it would be given in a locked facility and probably, and, and the board supervisors have not acted on it. I'm not sure if they will, if there's support among the board, and it really does take funding, which it does not have. And, you know, if the board supervisors are not willing to allocate any funding, it would be really hard to utilize a county facility and tap any resources. As I, as I see it now, there are a lack of resources for substance abuse treatment overall. Had conversations that I think that needs to take place for voluntary treatment. And some of the funding that we did receive from the Mental Health Services Act, you know, another choice, another chance, is, is a program that is offered here in West Sacramento and has been beneficial in turning the tide on those who are using to, you know, to not use. So it's, it's a challenging topic. I do get, I do understand and sympathetic to the concerns that the Chamber of Commerce have also raised related to homelessness and issues, you know, that could be affected to substance abuse. So I understand it, not quite ready yet to support the bill.
I think it was communicated that there had been changes to the bill that would suggest that it was voluntary participation and not like a false imprisonment. So I think initially it originated in one fashion, but has evolved since. But with that, I mean, there are a lot of, there, this is just a, it is a very big signal, and I'm proud of our assemblymen for taking this on, frankly, especially given that there are on both sides of this very complicated matter. And if we continue to do, and I think we're going to hear a little bit more from our chief tonight and other parties, as we talk about the future of, of law enforcement and engaging in these complicated issues, but I do think that would be a step in the right direction.
Right. And so with that, on April 15th, the Airport Land Use Commission convened, and we took action on an amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Sacramento County for Mather's Airport Land Use Compellibility Plan. Thereafter, the Secog Board met, and we approved the Federal Transit Administration Coronavirus Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act funds. Keltrans received through the California Transportation Commission, the California State Transportation Agency had some support and Federal Transit Administration's approval to award a set portion of the Sacramento Urbanized Area FTA 5310 Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act funds. And the funds can only be used to provide transportation services to seniors and people with disabilities. Secog approved the awards and certified that all four awardees met requirements and conditions, and this includes the Shores of Hope program. The board also approved the federal fiscal year 2021 regional program of projects for the Federal Transit Administration's Section 5311 Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act funds. And the, it was about 2.2 million in funding to our region's rural transit agencies to help them respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. So Yolo County did transit district rural region received 407,000 for their 1.9 million in estimated operating cost. We also approved the Low Carbon Transit Operations Fund allocation and transit operator projects for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Each year, the state controller publishes regional allocations for the local carbon transit operations fund, and staff uses the allocations to calculate funding for each eligible, eligible transit operator recipient in the four county Secog region. And Yolo County Transit District received 190,000. The board approved the 2021 Secog funding round, which was about 195 million. The 2021 Secog funding round is an important source of transportation investment in the region. So over, you know, just a little history, over the last 15 years, Secog has conducted competitive regional funding rounds every two to three years. And through these rounds, the board acts to award transportation funding to road, transit, bicycle, and pedestrian projects and programs within the four county region, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba Counties, that meets the goals and objectives of this Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainability Sustainable Community Strategy. The recommendation for the 2021 funding round are the culmination of a two-year process. And throughout 2020, Secog staff worked extensively with a broad range of stakeholders across the region in the buildup to the 2021 funding round policy framework. In addition to numerous individuals and group meetings across all four counties, Secog held a series of workshops and webinars to seek input under the themes of investment priorities, project identification, and overall application process. The Transportation Committee and full Secog Board also spent multiple months meeting and discussing, deliberating, ultimately acting in around September 2020 on the policy framework for the 2021 funding round. The framework made notable changes and refinements within the three input themes of investment priority, application process, and project selection process. The board's funding round policy frameworks set four primary programs to meet the objectives of the 2021 funding round, regional program, community design, innovative mobility, and the new Engage, Empower, and Implement Program, originally titled the Communities Pipeline Projects Program. The board then acted in October of 2020 on the budget for the 2021 funding round and its individual programs. And West Sacramento now is successful in securing their entire 9.7 million in funding request for the three proposals, the Sycamore Trail Phase Two and Three Bicycle and Pedestrian Overcrossing and Extension Transformative, which was 6.189 million, the I Street Deck Conversion for Active Transportation, which is 3.239 million, and the Sacramento Avenue Complete Streets Corridor Improvement Plan for Community Design, which is 273,000. And another project also includes Sacramento Regional Transit District for 808,000 for project development, engineering, and design for the light rail extension to West Sacramento from the Sacramento Valley Station. So I just want to recognize, and thanks to Aaron Laurel and his leadership, Jason McCoy, Sarah Strand, Alicia Trivokate, and, and everyone who put in a lot of hours to achieve these results. And, you know, thank you for all your hard work for, you know, making this happen. This helps our community be able to have the necessary funding. This is what we do best here in West Sacramento, is leverage our resources to be able to improve our bikes and trails and other projects that have been approved. In addition, we approved the draft budget and overall work program for fiscal year 2021, which can be found online, so that it is now ready for release for public comment. And Sacramento Region Parks and Trail Strategic Development Plan is still collecting community input through our online survey until April 30th. So just want to let you know that, that is on the Secog website. I'll try to release it again so we can get West Sacramento input, so we can reach out to our partners in obtaining that. And last but not least, I just want to say that I was appointed to the Secog's Race, Equity, and Inclusion Working Group, along with eight other members. It will be chaired by council member, Sacramento Council Member Rick Jennings and vice chaired by our Davis Council Member Lucas Frieks. And that concludes my report. So next, we'll move to our consent agenda, and I think councilmember Alcala, you had requested to remove a couple of items?
Two and three.
Two and three.
Other questions?
Yes. Questions? Okay, thank you. Any other requests to remove any agenda items? No other requests? Okay, councilmember Alcala for item number two. What are your questions?
Thank you. So my question is, under the security clause by budget cost center, I wanted to know why the learning ladder was still on there.
Hi, this is Roberta Raper. Learning ladder is still operating, and in fact, learning ladder is operating right now with an extension program for, for kindergartners who graduated previously and who have been doing Zoom class, including my daughter. And so we are incurring costs for security guards for learning ladder.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the other one actually came from a constituent. So our city uses a private security, and we've had many nonprofits, example is Holy Cross Church. They are required to have security, and they are also required to have police officers when they've had their annual festivals. They didn't have one this year, of course, but in other years. Could someone explain that to me, why there would be a requirement for both, since we're looking at private security for a city, and yet, you know, it's required to have police officers?
Is that, so is that an offline question, councilmember Alcala, or is it related to this?
Well, I thought it would be related simply because it is about private security companies. And that was asked by constituents, so I did.
Okay, so, okay. Go ahead, Roberta.
Sure, as an, as an overall, and maybe the, the police chief and the city manager can respond as well. Our, our police force is here to serve the public. This is private security for our own buildings, and if we were to take police officers off the street to perform that security, they wouldn't be there for the public. So that, that would be my initial response, but chief, I saw you turn on your camera, so you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think Roberta explained that differentiation quite well between the, the private entities and private properties. And also, some of those special events end up, though they're on a private site, have public space impact, often traffic impact. And so through the special event permitting process and review process, that's how we try to appropriately establish the type of staffing, the complement of staffing that makes sense for making sure that the, the broader community is, the impacts are mitigated.
All right. Those are the only two questions I had. Thank you.
Did you have any questions on item three?
Yes, I do. Moving over to my questions there. Now, on item three, actually, it's more of a request from our city manager. I was hoping to get the letters that were sent to the city from the previous audits, maybe from the last three years. Is it possible to get that?
Our previous audits are all posted on our website for several previous years, and I would be happy to send you a link directly to them, yes.
Thank you. And, and just two questions, you know, I've had concerns, was there anything addressing the no bid contract use that has been brought up before? And also on minority businesses, was there anything also specifying that perhaps we needed to address these issues?
No, really, we did have a finding in a prior year just due to a federal procurement. Typically, for, for normal city procurements, there are no DBE requirements. There are when we use federal funds or other granting authority funds, and we, we follow those requirements when they're required by those funds. The city doesn't have a policy directly to, to ensure that, but we could certainly add one if the council was supportive of that. The other piece on no bid contracts, there is no law against no bid contracts. And in fact, we bid out most of our contracts. There are some occasions where we use sole source, and we have addressed, you know, how that is approved, so that it is, it is more of the exception than the rule now. But we, we get appropriate documentation for those, and there, there's no, we haven't had any issues or any audit findings related to our procurement, since we've revised our policies and our procedures.
All right, thank you. Those are the only questions I had.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I moved. Second.
Okay, okay, councilmember Roscoe moved, and councilmember Alcala second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you. And now we'll move to our set, time set agenda. Item number 10, under the Economic Development and Housing, is a public hearing to consider resolution 21-30, adopting the CDBG 2021 to 2025 Consolidated Plan and Resolution 21-31, and also adopting the CDBG 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan. See, so I think there is a couple of presenters. One is Isaiah Alfred, and I think we're all aware he might be here as a backup? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, yes. Isaiah will be making the presentation this evening, and then I'll be available along with our consultant after the presentation to answer any questions.
Okay, the consultant is Louise Collis, former, former staff in our city. So Isaiah, please go ahead and do your presentation.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can see it. It's not a full screen, though, because I can see, like, everything else in the background. I don't know if you can blow it up a little bit. There you go. There you go, perfect.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, and members of the council. My name is Isaiah Alfred, and I am the Community Investment Specialist in the Economic Development and Housing Department. Today, I'll be presenting a brief summary of the Community Development Block Grant Program and reviewing the draft CDBG five-year consolidated plan and 2021 Annual Action Plan. After the presentation, staff requests that the council open a public hearing to take any comments, and upon closing of the public hearing, staff respectfully requests approval of the five-year consolidated plan and 2021 Annual Action Plan. In 2016, the city of West Sacramento became an entitlement jurisdiction, which enabled the city to receive funding directly from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. A requirement of the CDBG program is to develop a consolidated plan, which must occur every five years. The five-year consolidated plan must examine the needs of low-income persons and neighborhoods. CDBG funds must be used to address one of three national objectives. The city must develop an annual action plan, which allocates CDBG funds for activities to achieve the goals of the five-year consolidated plan. The first national objective benefits low and moderate income households. The second is the prevention or elimination of slums and blights. The third national objective is an urgent need, which is something unexpected, like a tornado or a flood. National objectives were used to establish goals from the current consolidated plan. It is important to note that 70% of the jurisdiction allocations must be used to benefit low-to-moderate income households. must be used to benefit low to moderate income households. The CDBG program is a strict funding source, but allows entitlement jurisdictions to use the money for a wide range of activities. These activities can be acquisition and rehab of affordable housing, construction and rehab of public facilities and public infrastructure. Economic development activities are also eligible for assistance under the CDBG program. Activities can also include homeless, youth, and senior programs. Any service activities are capped at 15% of the total allocation of any given year. The goals for the current consolidated plan sought to reduce the incidence and impact of homelessness, achieve goals in HUD Challenge Grand Fund in Washington Realized, strengthen economic opportunities for lower-income households, and affirmatively further fair housing compliance. All goals are planned through activities that fulfill at least one of three national objectives. The city committed 2017 and 2018 CDBG allocations totaling just over $1 million to support the development of a permanent supportive housing project. This project is scheduled to construct 85 housing units that will specifically target homeless individuals with serious mental illness or those at risk of chronic homelessness. This project is anticipated to be completed in the third quarter of 2021. It is also important to note that this project leverages a total of $30 million in other funding. In 2016, over $443,000 was allocated for design improvements to a section of the Riverwalk Trail, which connects to I Street Bridge. In 2019 and 2020, the city allocated over $766,000 for ENF Street improvements. The objective of the project was to improve pedestrian safety and accessibility, as well as address complaints regarding sidewalk improvements for the disabled. Both activities achieved the goals of Washington District Sustainable Community Infrastructure Project. In 2019, $60,000 was allocated to fund micro enterprise technical assistance program for low to moderate income individuals owning or working towards developing a small business in West Sacramento. The Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Program will provide a series of business development workshops, in addition to individual business and financial counseling. Fair Housing Services have been funded $21,000 every year of the current consolidated plan. Fair Housing Education and Counseling was provided to low to moderate income individuals. Multi-family complexes were tested for compliance with fair housing law. The city is in its last year of the current consolidated plan. As a result, staff began working on the development of the new five-year consolidated plan in late 2020. Including the staff report is a brief summary of several studies we thought were valuable in considering selection of goals of the new consolidated plan. The first being the housing element of general plan, which contains goals and policies that provide direction on key housing issues in West Sacramento. Additionally, an analysis of impediments, which is a planning process for local governments and public housing agencies to take meaningful actions to overcome historic patterns of segregation, promote fair housing choice, and foster inclusive communities that are free from discrimination. Washington Realized was the final planning document that focused specifically on urban structure and design, infrastructure, affordable housing, transportation, recreation and historic preservation, and land use. The policy and data gathered from these three big planning documents were utilized in the development of the new five-year consolidated plan goals. In addition to the review of planning documents and other data, public workshops were conducted before the Economic Development and Housing Commission and the Parks, Recreation, and Intergenerational Services Commission. A public hearing was also presented before the city council to take public comments and to provide the public with an overview of CDBG funding. Lastly, staff with the assistance from our consultant conducted public outreach by holding four virtual stakeholder-focused group meetings. Participants of the Affordable Housing and Homelessness noted the disparity between income and the cost of rent. Participants in a youth-focused group emphasized that there are barriers to housing for youth with insufficient income and lack of rental history to secure a rental unit. In the seniors and disability focus group, participants confirmed that the social security income was not enough to rent a one-bedroom unit in Yolo County, and there's a lack of accessible units for the disabled. And the last focus group was employment in small businesses. And this discussion presented a need for technical assistance and supportive services. Individual interviews were also held with the city's homeless service coordinator in Alta California Regional Center. The homeless coordinator emphasized that people experiencing homelessness in West Sacramento face many barriers to housing. These barriers included not having sufficient income to meet landlord requirements or poor credit and rental histories. The director of the Alta California Regional Center emphasized that they would like to partner with the city to work towards development of low-cost apartments for the city's underhoused population of adults with developmental needs. After review of documents and public outreach, staff is recommending the following goals for the new five-year consolidated plan. Goal number one addresses homelessness, which has been a key focus of the council's strategic plan for the past five years. Goal number two also addresses homelessness by creating housing opportunities. Goal number three is to provide infrastructure improvements in neighborhoods suffering from disinvestment. Goal number four is to provide fair housing education and counseling services to low and moderate income residents and landlords. Goal number five is to support small businesses by strengthening economic opportunities for small businesses and employment. And last goal is goal number six is the preservation of affordable housing stock to provide housing rehab funding for single-family home. These goals represent the needs that were identified during the consolidated plan process. However, not all of the goals will be achieved nor funded with CDBG funds. For the first year's allocation of the new consolidated plan, staff is recommending the following activities for funding. The ENF Street project will address infrastructure deficiencies within the Washington neighborhood by completing disconnected sidewalk and street crossing networks to support connectivity to the public transportation and riverfront trails. According to the census tract, this project is scheduled to serve residents in low-income neighborhoods. Furthermore, the Washington neighborhood is the oldest neighborhood of the city. Washington is one of the lowest-income areas and has been challenged for decades with aging infrastructure. ENF Street improvements are a primary focus to complete the goal of HUD Challenge Grand Fund in Washington Realized. Additionally, this project supports three affordable housing developments, which provide over 200 affordable units in the Washington neighborhood. And lastly, general administration funding will be used for program administration activities, including reporting to HUD, conducting environmental review of CDBG-funded Washington projects, and planning activities such as the consolidated plan and annual action plan. These funding allocations support the recommended goals. So how are these activities selected? Strategies for selecting activity focus on serving residents in the low-income neighborhood. Not all eligible projects are good uses of CDBG funds due to federal regulations and requirements. Staff attempts to be strategic and use CDBG funds on projects that are ready to move forward and will not expend an undue amount to meet federal requirements. We want to ultimately use CDBG funds to leverage other private state and federal funding sources. For example, ENF Street are two small blocks, but this project is a key piece towards completion of the goals in Washington Realized strategy. This concludes my presentation. Staff requests that the council open a public hearing to take any comments. And upon closing of the public hearing, staff respectfully requests approval of the five-year consolidated plan and the 2021 Annual Action Plan. Thank you for your time. Our consultant, Louise Collis, Raoul, and myself are open for questions.
Madam Mayor, you're on mute.
You're on mute. Sorry, thank you for telling me that. Isaiah, can you close the PowerPoints? I can see the council members here. Thank you. All right. Are there any questions among the council members before we open it up for public comment? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak under public comment, Madam Clerk?
There are none, Mayor.
There are none? Okay, we'll close the public comment and we'll turn it back to council and open it up for questions. This is a pretty comprehensive presentation that Isaiah just gave us. And I'm sure you have plenty of questions for him. Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protem Ladisma?
Thank you. And Isaiah, thank you for, and the rest of the team for your work on this and bringing it back to us. Just for clarification, while the plan is continuing to be, it's built. And the recommendation for immediate finance, I want to be clear, we're looking at, is the immediate funding available? Is you're allocating towards the Washington Neighborhood project, am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, Councilmember Ladisma. So we are approving two documents this evening. One of them is the new five-year consolidated plan, which, again, you have to, we have to do every five years.
Right.
But along with that five-year consolidated plan, we also have to approve our first-year annual action plan of that five-year consolidated plan. And the allocations that staff is proposing is only for the 2021-2022 allocation, the first year of the next five years.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And, you know, reading through your staff report and in the presentation, Isaiah, thank you very, explained a lot, providing clarity around the goals that we landed upon and the process to get there. I'm going to zero in, which is my life's work on the small business side, because it's obviously still part of the plan. And I know you, by way of the report, you reached out. Seems like we had a good conversation with the chamber around sort of direction where that could go. And while I'm supportive of that remaining a goal, and I know we have to appoint dollars, or at least we're allocating dollars right immediately today for housing. The technical assistance aspect of what was outlined in the small business areas is going to be really critical as this pandemic ends. There's just a lot of national attention, a lot of attention at the federal level around this aspect of what we end up doing, right? This is, we use these dollars and any other dollars to bring in firms to provide technical assistance. They've received, those firms have received a lot of grant money from private sector banks and institutions, from Congress or others to provide those services. And part of my just general feedback is A, supportive of it, and B, is as much as we kind of get into implementation at that point, or putting those dollars, is really thinking about the, kind of, with the chambers outlining what is exactly, for lack of a better term, the curriculum? Or whether going to focus on that technical assistance? It is, you've noted in your staff report, at least on the early part of your findings. It's all about capital access. And I know a lot of the users in the past of the service that we've done think Raoul can point to, this really pointed to minority business owners that are really small. And having a really good base of understanding some about being ready, the credit readiness for these folks that they may need or preparing for grants that may be available. The SBA is unloading, getting ready to unload 200 and something million, billion dollars of 28 something, I'm sorry, $28 billion in restaurant, the restaurant revitalization program, grant money. It's available. It's getting them ready for those types of situations. I think what everyone learned is in these kind of crises is how ready was everybody to sort of act? And so again, it's just, it's just some comment. We've always invested in that, Raoul, I think, and and Isaiah, in terms of our, you know, as a city, using those block, we see the ECG funds to bring in those folks. And I think it's just really, I mean, it's going to be remaining critical one. And again, I know where our dollars are tight everywhere, and we're kind of getting through budgeting issue, issues. But if there's other sources to kind of keep that kind of support to small businesses, it's just going to be really important. I'm glad you highlighted and kept it in the, in the goals going forward for the five-year plan. And other than that, I 100% support what you did, we did choose, and we are choosing on the Washington neighborhood. It has been a continual focus of the council for some time that I've been on council. And getting that infrastructure ready is, remains critically important to the neighborhood and to future development. And so again, I'm supportive of where we are. But thank you for the good work.
Thank you, thank you very much. I do just want to elaborate a little bit on the business technical assistance. As you mentioned, we have funded technical assistance programs in the past. And we're getting ready to roll out one this summer. And that is a need that was identified within the consolidated planning process. And, you know, it is something that we will be looking towards in the future. But as Isaiah noted, there are other local and state funding sources that are available for that purpose as well. So while we may not fund technical assistance, business technical assistance with CDBG funds, we are going to be looking at other funding sources to try to implement those types of programs. So just want to make sure that I mentioned that. It is something that, you know, could be funded with CDBG. But there are other funding sources, even local funding sources, that we could use to try to create a more comprehensive program. You know, CDBG is a great program, but it does come with a lot of, a lot of strings attached and a lot of requirements. So I think, you know, we try to make sure that we cater those programs so that they, they give us as much benefit as possible. And sometimes using CDBG, while it could be done, may not necessarily be the best funding source for a program.
Yeah, and, yeah, no, Raoul, 100% agree. And I'm just really noting that this has remained a priority in this, in this document, right? And I'm glad it is. And I appreciate you, your comments, because I can read through the lines about what the CDBG funds, the limitation on those could be. So again, if there's other, everyone is making commitments toward that, you know, kind of how these sorts of technical assistance programs could be funded through the city. And, you know, through by local government, through the state or whatever. So, yeah, I 100% just agree that if something else is available and gives us more, maybe more dollars to do it, or multiple dollars to do it, we should be looking for that. But again, here, part of the plan is a good thing, too, so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ladisma. And, you know, Mayor Protem Ladisma, I wanted to add that in our two-by-two meeting on the 28th with Supervisor Standee and Viegas, we are taking a look at the coronavirus relief funding, the county funding for support to our minority businesses and looking at, you know, also support to female-owned businesses. So, you know, those that are, you know, we think were more vulnerable and hit hard and unable to get some of those SBA loans to provide them with that additional support. So just we'll, we'll run it by everybody once we get some ideas on that one, now that I know your interest in this. And I know you're pretty good at figuring these things out. Are there any other questions among the council members? Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the great report. I usually have a lot of questions when I see a report of this size, but everything was answered. Just one question. How are you going to conduct the public hearing? How do you anticipate doing that?
So, public hearings have to be noticed. At least for CDBG, we always have to notice them in our local So uh, public hearings have to be noticed. Um, at least for CDBG, we always have to notice them in our local newspaper, uh both in English and Spanish. Um, they're typically noticed at least a couple of weeks before the hearing takes place. Uh, we also uh reach out directly to um stakeholders like Legal Services of Northern California, um our local H-PAC, uh which is a continuum of care. And just by by reaching out directly to H-PAC, they send out the notifications to all the service providers that are part of H-PAC. So we get a lot of outreach just by that alone. We also uh send out notifications directly to uh the uh PB cap, um which the the name escaped to me right now, but uh those are some of the uh agencies that we specifically reach out to when we have any type of noticing that we do. But specifically for CDBG, um again, anything that we publicly notice or any workshops that we do, we have to notice on the newspaper with at least a couple of weeks in advance, and we do it both in English and Spanish. And I'm sure very soon, depending on how the population, uh our Russian population grows, we may uh start doing that in Russian as well. Um, I believe once our um the minority population reaches thirty percent of the city, we have to translate everything, or at least the notices into that language.
Thank you, Row. I, that was one of my concerns, because I know we do have quite a few minority-owned businesses in the area that have been hit really hard. Thank you for the information.
And um, Councilmember Roscoe, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, thank you for the report. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. Uh, I just want to say that I I listened to the um Economic Development and Housing Commission presentation you provided um for the CDBG um action plan in front of us. It was a, it was a pretty robust presentation, I have to say. Um, they had quite a few questions that 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 some ran across my mind, but others I didn't even think of, and uh you did a great job in in responding to the questions um and providing the history and the context as to how we arrived at selecting um this particular area to invest funding in. Um, and I I uh have been hesitant in the past to, um, you know, I've been thinking about looking at CDBG for services, and I know we have a cap in services. Um, and I just want to put that out there, because I get I get approached a lot uh requesting CDBG funding um for services, and I do get that the strings attached are pretty extensive. Louise did a good job in in um articulating that. Um, but I don't think enough could be said at how complicated it is to use CDBG funding for services and um so we so we find something that is um more manageable and less um, you know, administrative, cost-intensive, and it and it ended up being, you know, this uh particular project. Um, the only, the only thing I have as far as a question, and just to clarify, this particular project is uh been funded over a couple of years. Our allocation is over four hundred thousand each year, and this is the same project we we continue to fund, aside from the coronavirus relief CDBG funding, which we received for Project Home Key, um which was a, which was a, you know, a bonus, I think, for that one year. Um, and hopefully we'll get more bonuses um in the future. We'll we'll keep plugging away, Row. Um, so we'll keep you busy with that, but it's going to be about two million. Um, that's one question, is it, is the total amount for this particular project, two million? And then the other question is, um, have we spent um all seven hundred and sixty-something thousand so far that we've set aside? And then the third question is, if we have a barrier because of the Indian heritage, you know, you know, uh issues related to that, if there's a barrier to continue to um to do the construction, could we pivot to something else and if to not lose the funding if we haven't spent it all? So those are my questions.
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. Um, so no, we have not spent all of the seven hundred thousand that has been allocated up to this point. Most of the work that has been done uh to date has been uh for design and uh for the NEPA process, the environmental review process, paying the consultant to um go through that um HUD required environmental review. Um, the design of the project, I believe, is uh around sixty-five percent at this point. Um, so there's still, uh, we still haven't done any construction work, because we can't actually do any construction work until the NEPA is completed. Um, and in terms of whether we can pivot, um, you know, one of the main reasons why the NEPA, why NEPA is done is to identify those types of issues, but most importantly, to uh find mitigation measures to allow us to move forward with those projects. So um I know that our consultant has been working very closely with uh with the tribes. Uh, one tribe I believe in specifically, in finding uh those mitigation measures. I know that we've looked at um changing our design slightly so that we don't run into those those types of issues. Um, so I think there are ways to 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 mitigate any impacts, and that's something that we will have to do as part of that NEPA process. Um, if we do not um complete the project at this point, whether it's with CDBG funds or or any other funds, then we would not be meeting our national objective, and we would run the risk of having to pay some of that money back that we have spent up to this point. Um, and again, um, I I think that our consultant has been doing a great job in in making sure that we we look at all of the potential mitigations and working with the tribes very closely uh to make sure that we do find something and uh come some common ground, to make sure that the project moves forward. And um I know Louise is on on as well. She's uh, if she has anything else to add about the whole NEPA process, you know, please do so, Louise.
Um, hi, I'm Louise Callis, for those of you that don't know me. I'm not sure if you can see my, if my camera is on, hold on just a minute.
No, it's not on.
There I am.
There you are.
Okay. Um, I'm um was a long time, was uh was lucky enough to work for the city of West Sacramento for quite a while, for fourteen years. Um, so many of the names that are up on the screen right now are very familiar to me, and some of the faces. Um, so I worked with Row and Isaiah to put together this uh second five-year plan. Um, and the the NEPA requirements for ENF Street are going to be if whatever type of government funding is used for that, you're going to have to address in those kinds of environmental issues. So we have been using CDBG funds for this initial design and the um environmental review. And as Row said, um, yeah, the hope is to be able to go ahead and complete this project with these CDBG funds, because we would, otherwise, we'd have to repay the money that we've already spent, because we, to achieve one of the national objectives, as Isaiah very clearly explained, they're required. Um, and the national objective we're trying to achieve here is improvement of a low and moderate income neighborhood. Um, and if the project's not completed, we don't achieve achieve that national objective. So the city would have to use local funds to repay the mu- the money that's been invested in this so far. Um.
It's the answer, sorry, just so the answer to the question of us being able to pivot and use the the same funding to another, because that that is that not possible?
Well, we are watching, I know, I say we, Row and Isaiah are watching that money very closely. There is an annual, every every year in like March to April, HUD looks to see how much money we have outstanding. And they are watching that along with the accounting department um to make sure that we meet that target, and so far we have. Um, however, if if that should occur, and the city needs to pivot, there are other goals in that five-year consolidated plan that we can look towards and and put money into. So that would require um a public hearing, a public notice, a thirty-day public comment period. Um, so it takes a little bit of time and a little staff work, but we could uh, we can do that. We've done it before, let's put it that way. Um, and it's it's not a problem. Things don't always go to plan. Uh, but um, we're fairly confident that this project's going to move forward.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
And and the last thing that I would say, uh Mayor Guerrero, is that um, as you probably know, and and the council knows, you know, back in twenty fifteen, the the city undertook uh quite an extensive uh infrastructure project in the Washington Neighborhood. And um a lot of these similar issues um arose during that time, because we were replacing aging infrastructure, uh which meant having to dig. So um, that project was able to be completed, and um again, you know, via mitigation measures that that were put in place at that time. So that's why I I I really don't see that being an issue. Certainly, it's something that we're going to have to work very closely with 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 the tribes to make sure that whatever mitigation um efforts are put in place um are completed, and and they're going to be monitoring uh those mitigation efforts to make sure that the the city follows through on on things that we have to get done.
Okay. And then uh one other question, um since you have all of these um uh like the recommendations on how to spend the funding, if we got a CDBG, you know, um allotment, and you go through your process, is it going to have to fit in one of these um recommendations that you are proposing here between the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five or the or the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two plan?
So generally, that that is, you know, uh the the console, the the con plan is meant to be our overarching blueprint, right, our map that we're supposed to follow. Uh, we can always make amendments to the con plan if there is a a goal that we think that we want to uh achieve. Um, so that's always a possibility uh to amend the consolidated plan to to add or remove uh some of these goals.
Okay, good. Good to know. Thank you, Row. All right, are there any other um questions? And thank you so much, um Isaiah, for the excellent presentation and all the work be, you know, behind getting this done. I know it's a very complicated issue. Um, you're learning some good things on on an important funding stream to to local jurisdictions. Um, and thank you, Louise, for being on board and hanging in there with us all these years. I think um all the work you've done since, I think, since twenty sixteen has been really even before then, has been really helpful. And Row, as usual, you're doing a great job at making sure we spend the money um well and investing it and and serving the people here in the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I'll accept a motion to approve. Um.
I'll move the recommended action.
Thank you. Mayor Potemla moves.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Alcala seconds, and with that, um, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Potemla Desma.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you so much. Um unanimously moved. Next on our time set agenda is item number eleven under Parks and Recreation is consideration of the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash five repealing and replacing chapter eight forty eight dot forty, twelve dot twelve, twelve dot sixteen, and twelve dot um twenty, and adding chapter twelve dot five six to the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code to allow for regulation of boating and public boat dock facilities of the Sacramento River. And um I think we have Erin Rivas. Hello, Erin.
Good evening, Madam.
Hello, good to see you. Rec Business Manager. Thank you so much for doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, council members. Uh, my name is Erin Rivas, and I am the Business Manager for Parks and Recreation. I'm here tonight to present you with a first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash five, updating the City Municipal Code relating to the regulation of boating and the use of boat dock facilities in the jurisdiction of West Sacramento. The city recently constructed a new public boat dock along the Sacramento River at Riverwalk Park. The new dock was funded in part by a grant with the Department of Boating and Waterways, more specifically, uh the Boating Infrastructure Grant Program. The grant program requires that the city provide additional regulation of the of the dock use. Much of the existing municipal code relating to boating and boat dock facilities was that which was adopted from Yolo County upon incorporation in nineteen eighty-seven. The municipal code included references that were significantly outdated, and many of the enforcement mechanisms consistent. Park staff works with Economic Development and Housing, uh the Police Department, and the City Attorney to update the existing City Municipal Code. The updates provide for additional regulation of permitting and enforcement activities within the Sacramento River and at public boat docking facilities, as well as identifying a mechanism for enforcing activity along the Sacramento River and clarifying who has the authority to enforce these regulations. This ordinance replaces language in chapters eight and twelve. Chapter eight point four zero relates to pollution and anchorage of vessels in the jurisdiction of West Sacramento. The update to the municipal code will allow for the additional regulation of anchorage permits within all City of West Sacramento waterways, will establish a notice to relocate and associated enforcement policy, more clearly defined enforcement authority, identify permit types and private facility exemptions, define anchorage permitting process and conditions for issuances, uh establish a mechanism for revoking and and uh anchorage permits, and determine the penalty for violating permit terms. Chapter twelve relates to, uh, I think it's a twelve, twelve twelve relates to boats and watercraft within the boundaries of city boat facilities. The update to the municipal code for this section will establish additional prohibition on leaving marine debris. Chapter twelve sixteen relates to public boating facilities. Uh, the update to this section, the municipal code will identify the Harbors and Navigation Code as a basis for public boating facility regulations, will establish five nautical mile per hour speed limits near city public boat facilities located between the I Street Bridge and the Tower Bridge, and identify uh applicability of five nautical miles per hour speed limit in other waters within the city that might be here described in section six five five point two of the Harbors and Navigation Code. Chapter twelve point two zero relates to boating and water recreation. The update to this section will clarify uh that diving with the aid of diving equipment or scuba gear is allowed, and will clarify enforcement authority. Uh, the the ordinance will add language to chapter twelve to specifically address uh regulation of the new public boat dock. So it's chapter twelve point five six relates to the Etteness Saliki Public Boat Docks specifically. Uh, the new municipal code language will provide for the following. It will define certain terms related to the grant program that funded the dock, delegate a regulatory authority related to the dock to the city manager, establish a permitting scheme for the dock that complies with the grant requirements, prohibit the abandonment of vessels, dumping of refuse, vessel maintenance activities, or the use of personal watercraft at the dock, and will identify illegal and non-permitted uses and activities. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one five, and a request to waive the first reading and read read by title only. Uh, this item will come back for a second reading and back to council for adoption at a future meeting. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rivas, and uh bring it back to council for questions. Any questions among the council members? No, open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers, Madam Mayor.
No speakers, okay. And close the public comment and bring it back to the council. Are there any other questions? No questions. Um, uh, Mayor Potemla Desma?
Well, I'll just make a, no, no questions. Um, uh, comment just on, i- i- it's welcome to have the ordinance and the fact, because it signals the sort of the more access uh the update, or as we should say, the reopening of access uh of the riverfront uh to our city. The new dock is a plan for a while, the the grant that we we pursued and got, and now we're we're reopening an important historic part of the river, and just as in, we, you know, the ordinance is is the thoughtful way, Erin, of the the ensuring our our boating friends as the sun comes out, and they're going to be out, the rules, and then and the way we're going to manage it. And I appreciate uh sort of the in the staff report addressing the fact that this this may impact some of our services, namely, your, you know, patrols or police that may be there or uh but more so, it does provide rules, uh the role to make sure, or rules rules of the waterways of how to um uh how how we actually access, people access, and making sure we keep this important asset that uh in in good condition. So congratulations to the city staff for sort of furthering this, being thoughtful um and and thorough in thinking through um, thinking that through. So just want to make that comment. And if there's, are we, are we, if there's no other comments, Madam Eric, can further a motion? I'm not sure where we are.
Uh, yeah, I do have a few questions, um, but I'll 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 um set your motion on the table and ask a few questions here. I do, I do want to know, you know, um, how, so the speed limit is whatever nautical miles here for for mile. how, so the speed limit is whatever nautical miles here for mile per hour, whatever. How do you track that? Do you do you use like like some kind of, how do you, how is that tracked if you find that there's a speeder?
I would think it would be the boat patrol. They probably have a, I think they would have like a little speedometer type or whatever they, whatever like CHP speed, I think, I don't know. Chief Strange might know how the boat patrol.
Strange.
I don't know. I think.
Go ahead, Chief.
Getting the moonlight on many items tonight. So first and foremost, before I get to the question, I just got to applaud Erin for the comprehensive collaborative approach to this. The update, as she mentioned, was long overdue, and I think it will continue to evolve over time, the fact that we've re reengaged it in an effort to really activate in the right ways. The waterfront is just one step in what we hope will be achieved over the development in that whole region. As far as the specific question, I admit I'm not a boater. But in most cases, there's a pretty good experience base in our folks that do that, that work as an auxiliary assignment. And so the recognition of excessive speed is usually not difficult. That five mile an hour, I think, is the indicated speed through that region, and that's consistent with the Sacramento side of the river, which is also important for the continuity of enforcement operations and for, again, establishing expectations around the boating public. But it's usually fairly easy to recognize when somebody is breaking that, whether that be by the wake that they create or just because it's so obvious the speed that they need to address. We're definitely not looking to get somebody going six miles an hour and hammer them, but much of the enforcement activity actually ends up being education based with the boating public and and to Councilmember Ledesma's comment, and this holds true on the water or across the city. When people are informed and educated about what the expectations and rules are, most people comply with them, and that's what we expect out of the boating public as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I believe the enforcement is under the jurisdiction of the city manager. The enforcement of these, of these.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so whoever he chooses to delegate the responsibility to.
Okay. Okay, just, and so, you know, when, when these things start happening, I guess, and people will start complaining, everybody will go to the city manager for now until, you know, we work that out. Okay. That's good to know. And
Madam Clerk, I just, as a, as a general principle, we recommend throughout the municipal code, putting enforcement with the city manager or the city managers designate. It's just a lot simpler to then, the manager can either decide that it's the police department, code enforcement, parks, and we don't have to go back and rewrite the code every time there's a change that wants to be done. So that's my standard recommendation.
I see. Okay, good to know. Thank you so much. That helps. Okay, and then, you know, yes, this is a long time coming. Erin, I've been out there. It looks really cool, and I'm excited and looking forward to seeing it put to good use. And with that, we have, you know, Mayor Portemba moved the item. And Councilmember Rosco's seconds. And thank you so much, Erin, for all your hard work that you put in. I know it's a lot of hard work. So thank you. I know you worked late nights for this. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Portemba Desma.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our our regular agenda, item number twelve, and under Police is a comprehensive report from our West Sacramento Police Department. Chiefs, our new Chief Strange, welcome in your, in your role now as chief. I'm very excited to have you covering our, our police force and, and then some. So you may begin.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council. So we're going to present tonight, and while I'm kind of introducing here, I'll let the slideshow controls get turned over to Elaine Carlton. But what we're trying to present here is a snapshot and in our presentation, a high level snapshot of 2020, the year that was 2020 for your police department here in the City of West Sacramento. We can't talk about our police department without talking about policing on whole, especially in 2020. It was challenging. It was revealing. And it really illuminated that our commitment to professional service to this community is that professionalism is vital. It also really emphasized the fact that though we're an evolving department and an evolving profession, it is vital that we continue to evolve and that we do so with our community and in alignment with our community's values. And I, and I really am confident that we will continue to move in that direction. Like every other place, we are full of imperfect human beings that I believe are truly committed to doing the very best that they can for this community. And a couple of those people are helping me tonight. So it'll be their first time having the opportunity to help present to council. So our crime analyst, Elaine Carlton, will be presenting on our crime information. And Lieutenant Ryan Lukens, our newest lieutenant, will be presenting on our progress and process and status regarding the Racial Identity and Profiling Act and the requirements that come along with that. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Elaine to start, and I'll, so you guys have to close with the presentation.
Hi, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Elaine Carlton, and I'm the crime analyst for the West Sacramento Police Department. And tonight I will be sharing our 2020 crime statistics with you, focusing primarily on what we call the UCR Part One crimes. These crimes are separated into two categories, violent crime and property crime, and are the nationally recognized crimes that we report to the Department of Justice and FBI. In 2020, we were faced with many challenges, and it was difficult to know how crime rates might be affected. We did our best to monitor not only local trends, but also regional and national trends. By the end of the year, our total Part One crime rate was four percent below the 2019 total, with 1,747 Part One crimes being reported to us. While this was a decrease from the previous year, it is nine percent above the five-year average of 1,606. To give you an idea of what crime types contribute to the Part One total, let's look at the first category, violent crime. Violent crime consists of four subcategories, homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. These are typically known as crimes against a person. In 2020, we reported 214 violent crimes to the Department of Justice. This was 13% above the 2019 total, with a difference of 24 reports, and was also 3% above the five-year average of 208. Within the four subcategories of violent crimes, we can look a little closer to see what some of the driving factors are behind the reported totals. For example, in 2020, there were three homicide reports. We had an additional seven reports of attempted homicide, with all of those resulting in an arrest. Of the 23 rapes, we can report that none of them were committed by a stranger and that the victim and suspect knew each other in some capacity. To clarify, the rape total does not include statutory rape, but does include attempts or assaults to commit rape. There were 84 robberies in 2020, and of those, 23% were shoplifting related, where force was used by the suspect to flee from a store's lost prevention employee. This is significant to note because these are not the typical robberies that you think of, and yet they account for a significant portion of our total. In 2020, there were 104 reports of aggravated assault. Almost half of those were family or domestic violence related, which is one of the national trends that many agencies across the country reported seeing an increase in. Moving on to property crimes, you can see that it too is broken down into four subcategories. These include burglary, larceny theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. In 2020, there were 1,533 reports of property crime, which is 5% below the 2019 total, but 10% above the five-year average of 1,398. As mentioned earlier, it was difficult to determine how COVID-19 and the stay-at-home orders were going to affect crime. And in 2020, we saw several property crime trends emerge. Several of these trends were recognized as being a problem throughout the greater Sacramento area, and every effort was made to participate in information sharing with neighboring law enforcement agencies to address them. The trends that were identified were catalytic converter theft and community mailbox tampering and mail theft. Like violent crime, we're also able to break down some of the most notable crimes that make up property crime. In 2020, there were 207 burglary reports, with 120 of those occurring at a commercial or retail location and 67 of them occurring at a residence. One local trend that we saw with the commercial burglaries was an increase in self-storage unit burglaries. For the year, there were 43 of these reports taken, accounting for 36% of the commercial burglary total and 21% of the overall burglary total. Looking at larceny theft, there was an 8% decrease from the 2019 total, or a difference of 95 reports. Forty-six percent of those larceny thefts involved theft from a motor vehicle, such as vehicle burglaries or catalytic converter thefts. Specific to catalytic converter thefts, in 2020, there were 97 reports taken, which is a 94% increase from 2019. We had taken 50 catalytic converter thefts in 2019. Shoplifting also accounts for a large portion of our larceny thefts, with 390 reports being made throughout the year. These do not include the robbery-related shoplifting reports that were mentioned earlier. Motor vehicle theft was one of the property crime categories that increased last year, with a total of 222 reports, or an 8% increase. Of those vehicles that were reported stolen to the West Sacramento Police Department, 82 were recovered locally and 93 were recovered by an outside agency. An additional 137 vehicles were recovered by the West Sacramento Police Department that had been reported to an outside agency. We also had an increase of 10 arson reports, for a year in total of 31. Nine of those cases resulted in an arrest. In addition to crime statistics, the police department also closely monitors and analyzes traffic-related incidents and reports. In 2020, there were 692 traffic collisions reported. That is 5% lower than 2019. Despite the decrease in overall collisions, there was an increase of 16% for injury-related collisions. There was no change in the number of fatal collisions, with both 2019 and 2020 experiencing five of those incidents. As with other officer-initiated activities, the restrictions of COVID-19 resulted in a decrease in citation writing, with over 2,000 fewer sites being written in 2020. Thank you for your time. I will now let Lieutenant Lukens present the information on the Racial and Identity Profiling Act.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned before, my name is Ryan Lukens. I'm a lieutenant here with the West Sacramento PD. And one of my responsibilities is to manage the RIPA rollout. And tonight present the data that we have so far on the Racial and Identity Profiling Act and our status. So for those of you who don't know, the RIPA or Racial and Identity Profiling Act of 2015 was enacted with the goal of eliminating racial and identity profiling within policing, as well as to improve diversity and racial and identity sensitivity within law enforcement. The aim of the legislation is to improve law enforcement, community relations, and collaboration, transparency, and accountability. So one of the things I should note is that it's quite a large undertaking for DOJ, and there are four waves. They call waves in the RIPA rollout. West Sacramento is, falls under wave four, the very last wave, because we have less than 333 officers. However, we started collecting what I would call factual data not long after the legislation was enacted. In 2020, well, I should say the difference between our data right now and the DOJ stop data that's presented on the screen is the type of data it is. DOJ stop data, which is something we will be reporting on starting next year, is perception data, meaning it is a report of officer perception at the time of detention or search when they contact a member of the community. In order to get ahead of the requirements and for transparency, the West Sacramento PD started collecting this type of data in factual form. It came from field interviews, arrests, and citations. So that's the difference between the data that we're presenting today and the actual DOJ stop data. So on the screen, you can see the West Sacramento Police Department RIPA data as compared to the DOJ stop data. And so we have 40% stops on the white community, 25% for the Hispanic community, 12% unknown, and 19% stops the black community. Now, we are aware that there is a disparity in the data as represented with the, with the black community. We don't know why there's disparity, but we are dedicated to working with the Department of Justice to understand, uncover the factors that contribute to the root cause of that disparity. Elaine, can you move forward one? So that's the data that we have to this point. And I want to talk about the actual, our actual efforts with the DOJ perception stop data. Like I said before, West Sacramento Police are in wave four, which means that we do not have to report RIPA data until April 1st of 2023. However, because we want to get in front of in front of this and report early, we beta tested a program called Ripalong in November of 2020 and decided to move forward the implementation of that program to fulfill and fully implement RIPA perception data reports as soon as possible. So on April 1st, the department completed the training and implementation of Ripalong, which is a self-guided app that allows officers to correctly complete all the required RIPA datasets fast and efficiently. It takes approximately, you know, three to six minutes to complete one report. Officers are required to do that following every stop or search of a member of the public. So So, takeaways from this are that we will be able to report RIPA data a full year ahead of the requirement. And we're working with Ripalong. We can, well, develop a semi-custom dashboard that provides us with more information than we have currently. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Hope that this was informational and informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thanks, Ryan, and thanks, Elaine. Before I really get started into my wrap-up here with a lot of the administrative things that have challenged us and that we faced in 2020, I would just like to take the time to say that, you know, both from a crime statistics perspective and a much deeper dive into the RIPA information, we did prepare an unusually long report. And there's a lot of information in there, including deeper dives into both those subjects. And with RIPA, the disparity that we see with our black community, with those that are stopped by us, is one that we have seen for, well, since we've started tracking that information. And the distinguishing piece between RIPA data and what we've been collecting is RIPA requires that perception data, as Lieutenant Lukens mentioned. And what we've been presenting is outcome data based on field interview cards, citations, arrests. So those are objective in the sense that we actually know on those outcomes exactly what the race or other identifying features are with the individuals we come into contact with. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, any kind of changes that we see in the data as we move towards perception data. But it's also note, I've been able to be on the Child Abuse Prevention Council for the last few months. I was one of the newest members appointed there. And it was interesting to hear that in the child welfare system, they are dealing with the same type of disparity. And so, for me, knowing that we absolutely try to do our best and it's perplexing and challenging and frustrating to see those disparities in our contacts, it tells me that there is major work to do across all systems, policing absolutely being one of them, to try to understand and do the deep dive into what is the root cause of these outcomes. And I will tell you, we are just beginning, and that is long work, arduous work, and work that we're willing to undertake. My hope is that through data as a foundation and being transparent with that data, that once we get to the point where we have really broad, validated data, that both our community, but also hopefully academic research partners will really be able to come beside all of us in our respective institutions to really peel this whole thing back. Because there are things that are clearly in place that contribute to that, that we can't even put our finger on at this point. So, I think that is actually a good segue into this presentation. So I'll let Elaine advance the slide for me. So, in 2020, there was a lot of change for the police department and challenges, no doubt, that most of us are well aware of. But I think more than anything, it's important to know that really my focus and our focus in part is on that transparency, growing that transparency, because I believe it is key to aiding in increasing our legitimacy with our community and that we do what we can to truly earn that perception of being legitimate and having legitimate authority. That work will never stop because really, the reality in this profession is we're often judged by our last perceived bad act. And so we can do a lot of good and it simply just doesn't hold water if something comes crashing down. So, we are absolutely vigilant, committed to that, and we're committed to appropriate oversight within our and accountability within the police department. And so, in that vein, you will see in this report a very large attachment, which itemizes case by case every use-of-force incident we had, every pursuit we had, and every complaint we had. And it illustrates the work that was done under Lieutenant Lukens' leadership in the Professional Standards and Training Division, where they can be in a board every quarter to review every single one of those things with an eye towards being incredibly critical of our actions in the hope that we can constantly improve. And that's what we're committed to doing, is to be a constantly evolving department that strives to continually improve. So, let's talk about 2020. Leadership transition was an obvious undertaking. So, Chief McDonald retired at the beginning of November of 2019, and I became the interim chief and have held the role of leadership of the department since then. Quickly, we did follow through with the implementation of the Professional Standards and Training Division. And as I've said, there have been some outgrowth of the duties of that and the responsibilities of that division. It is very much emphasized on the professional, as the title says, standardization of our profession locally. And that does mean that that's us being willing to challenge ourselves, but also hopefully getting more and more input from the community, specifically to help inform the changes and evolution. From a training perspective, we have made a double down on a commitment to training. And obviously, with a lot of the shutdowns that COVID response caused, we really were able to pivot and have a lot more self-determination by enlisting technology and doing Zoom trainings and doing other things and some things that we created in-house to enhance that training. One of the things that's mentioned later in the slide deck is our integrated de-escalation training. So in any kind of force training that we now employ, what we've done is we've integrated de-escalation to every aspect of those trainings. So it's not just trained off on its own. A lot more scenario-based training that tests the de-escalation skills of our staff and tries to norm that within potential force encounters. One of the biggest, the biggest two emphasis right out of the gate with the leadership transition was the need to shift resources to core services, primarily to our patrol division and to our investigative division. That meant that we did peel back a little bit from some of our dedicated staff that were assisting our homeless manager. Fortunately, later on, we rolled other civilian resources in to help assist with that. And we continue to be partnered with Parks and Rec on some of the mitigation efforts. The other piece that I emphasized was employee wellness and peer support. I firmly believe that our profession has needed to evolve in this way for some time. There has long been a stigma in our profession, as there is too often across our communities, that seeking help because you're not well is stigmatized. And it was really important to me that inside our walls, that that's changed. And thankfully, we did that at a really critical time as we were just getting to come to the precipice of the start of COVID-19. And so many other things that challenged us in 2020. I'm pleased to report that we are up and running with our wellness program. We are really supported through our EAP services that the city contracts with. And we have a great group now of trained peer support staff that have responded on some critical incidents that we've unfortunately encountered over the last several months. That's important to me because it's sort of the premise of hurt people, hurt people. And I think that people that are well also can do more help for the members of our own community. So I want our staff to be very well and very healthy so they can do their best work. So, the COVID-19 response, it changed things for all of us. And it certainly changed things here for the police department, from staffing changes, scheduling changes, to help mitigate or decrease the amount of officers coming in contact with each other that wouldn't be in the same cohort. We did a lot of shifting and changing. And of course, you know, scheduling sanitation and then some operational modifications that Elaine alluded to, where we did decrease some direct contact enforcement operations. And we ended up trying to employ some virtual contacts or just telephone contacts on certain levels of calls for service. It felt difficult because we like to be as close to a full-service organization as possible. So it felt like a compromise. I think all of us, and thankful for our community and its understanding, all have adjusted and have made the best we could with that situation. And we're still doing that. But, you know, notable are your public safety folks across the city, both police and fire. We never stopped working. And though we were there the whole time, it definitely took a toll for folks that were having to adjust at home with their families and the changes in environment there. So I'll have you advance the slide, Elaine. Thank you. So, really getting into the meat of things, COVID was a challenge. But in our profession, really, there hasn't been anything, I don't think, any more challenging in my career, certainly in my leadership career, than what has occurred since. And really, what has, as I mentioned, has been really illuminated with the death of George Floyd. And I have to take the moment to comment. We are just over 24 hours removed from the conviction of Derek Shobin, the former Minneapolis police officer. And I will say that I know that there's going to be differences of opinion about that outcome. But what I will say is I believe that the process worked. I believe that though imperfect, we still have the best criminal justice system in the world. And I think that the outcome of that case proved that. It's imperfect, and we still all have so much to do. But my hope is that that is a stepping off point for all of us and definitely for me and my staff. And I hope that it actually galvanizes our community. We have a diverse community with diverse experiences and perspectives. But I really do believe that most of us share a common goal of making our community better and safer and a place where people feel like there is equity in their ability to thrive here and grow here and be safe here. And so, I think it's just really important and the timing of this presentation would be not well utilized if I didn't speak to that. So I think we're in a good spot. And I know that many people are uncomfortable, including people in my profession. And so, I will say what a former colleague and coach would tell me at times and tell our players a lot of the time is it's time to get comfortable with being uncomfortable. And I think that's a good space to be in because you know that you are growing and changing and evolving if you're uncomfortable, because growth doesn't happen when you stand still. So for us, right following the death of George Floyd, there was the initiative Eight Can't Wait that came out that helped elevate several key points of police reform, a call for action. And many of those Eight Can't Wait initiative points are contained within a release that we did shortly thereafter on the guiding principles for the West Sacramento Police Department. It's on our webpage within the city's website. And so I would invite people to go there. We do plan to keep updating our initiatives and some of our transparency efforts by posting more information to that webpage. So look for that. Two of the really biggest legislative changes in California that came of last year was the ban on chokeholds. We had allowed for the carotid restraint prior to this ban and have eliminated that in a policy change. And so, that is something that was a change for us. And then the other piece, interestingly enough, independent investigations of critical use-of-force incidents by police officers. There was legislation last year and there is continued legislation this year to further refine how officer-involved shootings specifically, force encounters ending in deaths are investigated. The bill offered by Senator McCarty last year, I believe it was AB 1506, did pass and was enacted. It initially had been written to have the Department of Justice handle all of those cases. And DOJ couldn't support that because they didn't have the infrastructure and staff to do that. So it was significantly changed to where now DOJ will investigate those cases that involve an unarmed person who was killed by the police. Locally, Senator McCarty actually consulted with us. And he did so as that bill was getting enacted because he knew he would be bringing the bill back. And he looked to the model that he learned tragically about through our officer-involved shooting that we had in September of 2020, where Yolo County had long since had a protocol in place where an outside agency comes in and takes over the full criminal investigation into our officers' actions. So, it's nice to see that we had something in place that is going to be a model-type approach to those investigations to ensure as much as possible that the community understands that we are an open book and that we expect the level of scrutiny that should accompany the level of authority that we are granted. And then separately but clearly related is our efforts of police reform. Our city took a bold action in making a quick move to really challenging what has long been the response to community mental health issues, which is a call to 911 and a police response. And I said in July, and I'll say it again now, that we have staff that are well-trained through crisis intervention training and perform really well with people in crisis. But the reality is that beyond the initial response and beyond the hopeful de-escalation and perhaps a trip to the hospital, there is more work that can be done. And I think when we can look and look with humility at ourselves to really ask the question about who is the best to respond in certain situations, it gives us the opportunity to not have to be failing at something to be able to say, no, there is something better that we can do. And I think as long as we keep squarely in our minds that our goal is to help our community, that doesn't necessarily mean that the police have to be the answer. So this was a move that illustrated that. And I'm happy to report that we are doing that work and we're still growing those assets in the Community Outreach and Services Division, sorry, Outreach and Support Division. But it is a growth process. COVID has brought a concentration of folks together through Project Room Key and Home Key. And where I think a lot of people will worry about that, the beauty of it is it came with service providers that have really helped that community along. And I think that even our homeless community is better off for these resources. And of course, those resources stretch much further than our homeless community. And we're seeing really the community benefit there. I spoke earlier about the Professional Standards and Training Review Board and the large document that's included as an attachment. Again, I encourage people to look at that, but that is a significant move. And the fact that it is in this report for the public to see is a move, a bold move forward with transparency. And it's something that's important to me. It's important to our folks here. And I do believe that it reveals that we are human and we do make mistakes, but we do hold ourselves accountable. I mentioned before the enhanced training. In addition to the integrated de-escalation, one of the marquee trainings, and there is an attached list of all the trainings that our staff did this last year. But we did engage in implicit bias training for our entire department, both sworn and non-s sworn. We managed to create space and distance to do that even under COVID settings because it was important enough to do even despite a lot of the restrictions with COVID. I think that wraps up these slides, if I remember correctly, Elaine. If you could advance to the end. And I will just say that, you know, we are excited and challenged as we move forward. Anecdotally, today, and it's important for the community to know, we look at social media messages and of course, we get other types of messages. But today was a really good example to me of a typical type of day of feedback. So, we were applauded for our use of our resources, both sworn officers and clinicians in helping somebody who was clearly having a rough day and causing really profound community concern. But just a mere hour or two before that on social media, we also saw a concern that we have to follow up on about, you know, an unfortunate... We had a shooting incident last night. And, you know, sometimes in those circumstances as we're trying to track down the perpetrators of those crimes, sometimes we stop cars that are on a Sometimes we stop cars that are uninvolved, but we have to do our investigative work to determine that. And in this case, it left people feeling very uneasy, uncomfortable and somewhat traumatized just by having their encounter with the police. And so it just shows us that there is room for improvement. There's room for us to be, you know, even more professionally empathetic and trauma informed in what we do. Recognizing that the the community member response to situations like that are are something that that may happen frequently for us. As a very low frequency and and notable event in somebody's life. And so I think it just gives us room to use these types of inputs to improve. And so with that, I will submit our report, encourage everyone to take a deep dive into it. And I'm hoping for questions and comments as are Elaine and Ryan.
Thank you, everybody, for the comprehensive presentation and report. I'll open it up to counsel for any questions. Councilmember Alcala.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you so much and everyone, you know, for the many reforms that we've adopted in West Sacramento. So I just had a quick question. I may have missed in the report. In light of the George Floyd, one of the things that stands out is that some officers who have this type of history are not flagged. Do we flag our officers for that? Excessive force?
We we are a small enough department that we have a pretty good knowledge base of of who our staff is and what kind of issues they have. Or histories they have. We do have to follow the peace officer pillar rights that exists. So so some of those documented incidents would fall off after five years under the current law. I know there is a lot of legislative proposals, including a bill about decertification. And there was a bill that that was out for decertification last year. I expect a lot of work being done on that this year. And the concept is something that that I support and actually the the California Police Chiefs Association supports. But they do have concerns about making sure that there's still a due process involved in that. And that that the composition of the the review board is appropriate. But that is something that I think is it's a great question. And through professional standards and training and specifically our internal affairs section, that we do keep a good track on on that. And and we hold people accountable.
Thank you. My second question, I actually have four more. So on on the excessive use of force, was that, would you say the majority was for those officers that are maybe with less than three years? Or are they more seasoned officers in terms of the numbers?
Well, I will tell you for West Sacramento, I and I think this is a, this is a good opportunity to address perception versus reality. I I have seen in my entire twenty three plus years. Very, very few excessive force claims or sustained findings of excessive force in my whole career. Some may say that's because we don't, we don't actually call things what they are in our profession. And I and I understand that point of view and perspective. But, you know, we we see a lot of that across the news media. And in many cases, that's what it looks like. Of course, I don't know the facts and circumstances of any of those things that didn't happen here. So when we dive into these things, we obviously take them seriously. Every officer involved shooting, every critical incident like that is looked at criminally. And it's looked at administratively. And that's one of the factors, the appropriateness of force and if it's excessive or completely appropriate. Are factors that are considered through those processes. Here locally, I I wouldn't even have a data set to give you because it it has not happened with any level of frequency. As far as being able to trend years of experience. I would suspect that we can, you know, if there's not the data out there currently through academia. And some of that study that there will be those studies emerging very, very soon. And that's important, I think, for us to recognize because I know there's been questions about age requirements, education requirements. For officers entering this profession. And I think there's a call, a legitimate call for having an educated workforce. Because I know there's studies that that speak to levels of education and and the propensity for involvement in excessive force. At the same time, we're so challenged with recruitment that I would hate to exacerbate that. But but there's got to be a balance that can be struck. So so I can't answer that question directly. I don't have the data.
And I said, I had five questions or actually more comments. I'm really happy that we are including cultural norms instruction. Is is that a class that they're taking or is it just simply a presentation? Just a little more information on that, please.
Yeah, at this point, what we did was just a a training presentation. I would agree with you. There's, there's room for more growth and more emphasis. And and I am curious myself to see if the peace officer standards and training commission will be moving in that direction itself. I have not heard any definitive discussion about that. But I know that, you know, the the academy I went to twenty something years ago is very different curriculum based. In a lot of these ways than it was when I went there. So it's, there's definitely been an evolution and advancement in those trainings. And and where we send a lot of our folks that are hired as recruits go to our Sacramento based academies. They are receiving a lot, a lot more emphasis in those areas of not just the community policing. But really with a lot more tangible examples of that with with walks in the neighborhood. I know they they work in Oak Park frequently if they've gone to the Sac PD Academy. And and they're learning how to interact, not just how to interact with diverse communities, but why it's important. And I think that's, that's something that I think was often missed in the past. And I think there's just huge, huge value in connections with our community. Because then we can understand how they want us to interact with them and how they want us to serve them.
And then finally, I read one of, I was reading the reports, the instance. And one of them really stood out for me. And that was the one where the individual had, I guess, was it at Burger King? When he had an issue with, I guess, not receiving the right amount of money. And then he was given conflicting instructions by the officers, which seemed to escalate the situation. So to me, that that's just. Speaks volumes about why we have to have these de-escalation. I mean, I think if, when you're hiring folks, you gave them a scenario like that, the response would be very different than what actually happens, you know, out in the field. So without going too much into hiring practices, I just think that's maybe something that should be asked. You know, when when recruiting comes around, you know, how would you react in a situation like that? I think that that tells a lot, I think, about the individual.
I appreciate that recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, and I and I believe that's the only other question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Alcala. There are no other questions. I'll open it up for public comment this point. Oh, councilmember Roscoe, do you have a question? Okay, open it up for public comment. Madam clerk, is there any requests for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Would that be, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I had a question for chief. The chief, I wanted to find out at what, what percentage of our officers have completed the CIT training? And is it possible to get any specific data of for that completed training? A hard copy which shows, you know, the statistics?
Yeah, I I don't know about the second question. I don't think that would be hard for us to to produce. But we tend to run near a hundred percent. That that changes as we hire folks. As we we play catch up with that. But I think it's also important to note, and thanks for asking the question, John, that as we moved into this new contract. With Yolo County Health and Human Services to provide the two clinicians in West Sacramento. Along with that came the the commitment from Yolo County Health and Human Services to sort of retool. Revamp the county's CIT training. And so we're going to be getting that training that tended to be a sort of a one and done training. And and what has happened now is that there's going to be a shift. So where there will be the initial intensive training. But then there will be, I think it's every two or every three year follow up. Which is important because as an officer's experience level grows, so does the context of that training. And so we're looking forward to to the that training being delivered through Health and Human Services. So so we hope to get that going soon. In fact, that that reminds me and thank you for that, that I will be inquiring of them to know where the, of the status is of that.
Well, I appreciate you answering that question. And I know that I've I've heard of the lot that we had an incident not too long ago involving. An individual with, that was armed. And I think you guys employed some CIT training inside that incident and it didn't well. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, any other requests for public comment, madam clerk?
That includes our speaker.
All right, we'll close the public comment, bring him back to counsel. And any other comments or questions among the council members? Mayor Portimao Desma.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And and just as the point of order, just how we treat questions from the public to staff directly. Something to note going forward, just to make sure the public is addressing the council and not staff.
I see, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So the good questions, John, thank you. But, you know, chief, first of all, congratulations publicly formally on your new role. And these are no real questions. Here's some overarching comments. But the the report is is thorough and transparent. As I can remember, you, the police providing to the council. Particularly that what you noted earlier, which is the full reports on the different uses of force or complaints through the year. To provide complete transparency. And I I I think we we have been getting this report for some time. Chief, since I think you 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 got here and started providing the data. We we started talking about this some time ago about the need for. Better transparency and addressing as best we could the RIPA requirements and and trying to go towards the twenty first century policing model. Which kind of led was the forerunner, what we're looking at today. And you've always proven to be in in each instance forthright and and transparent as you can. And trying to help us understand the data. The difference this year is frankly, the the honest approach that you've taken about where we are. And I appreciate your comments about acknowledging the last twenty four hours meant and and. Preceding that, what what has sort of started with the twenty first century policing and unfortunately culminated through last summer. And the death of George Floyd and that our context of operating as a council oversight of of our city and our police department. That the entire, your your hierarchy has changed and so has ours. On how we, how we interact and how we, the questions, at least I feel we should be asking. And the direction we should be going. They, I think the the times and the and the and the need is apparent and has been apparent. And we've responded and I appreciate very much the the partnership you've shown, even as interim chief last summer. And 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 getting to the reforms that we approved with you last July. They were an important step, but the honesty part of today is about your acknowledgement that that's probably a first step. And that's, that's kind of where where I am. And in in terms of our role in this journey as well is the need for us to read this data and understand it. And I I I'll be honest, I read through the whole thing. There's a lot here. Hundred and two pages of data and and incidents and and still learning. This is not an area that I have an expertise in, in police and and law enforcement. Is not my bailiwick of where I typically play. So I'm learning too, and I appreciate our conversations about as I as I do learn. And I think you and I both agree that the 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 degree that our our role here is just to also provide some credible challenge. About the direction that that we go and challenging the data and challenging kind of where we are. So I I once, I appreciate that the 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 amount of of data you provide. And again, the honesty to which you have been presenting this today. Because it's, it's, it's important that the community understand that from your perspective where we are. And I I'm, I'm, it's, it's a place where we start our our kind of trust and where we go next. And the direction you've outlined and and where you're going is 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 true. But there there persists, which you noted, a very specific thing in noting the disparity. And how and the and the and our RIPA data, the DOJ, and this disparity and and stops among our African American residents. And even third degree, our Hispanic residents. It's, 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 it's not all a simple answer. It's to your point, there is a data question that this persists because the variance between the two sets of datas is, there's a big variance. But there is a, there is some, some work we have, we, and I put myself in that, we have to do. To understand, as you said, the root causes and fully support and and challenge ourselves to dig into that. Because it's a, it's a systemic issue. And as you noted, there's other agencies that are facing similar challenges. And and we need to understand this better. And I think, that's why I said, I appreciate the honesty and kind of being forthright about what stood out. And to you and and Mr. Lukens about pointing that out. That's, that's an important part because it's been, it's there and we can't ignore it. And and we have a responsibility to ask about it. And in addition, I appreciate your your comments around. And your, and what you put in in terms of where we went with kind of in the post George Floyd era and the steps you've taken. Particularly with the community policing and I'm sorry, the community outreach division and and where that's going. One hundred percent still supportive and and at some point would like to get sort of some more detailed updates on sort of direction and where they're headed. And when when the time's appropriate, because it's becoming an important part of how we address, not just, you know. Opportunities where, you know, a mental health professional can be involved or or coordinate. But also towards efficiencies and and officer time and where they're most. The the highest, the best use and kind of where they, where they, where they could be and be more efficient. I think that's an important aspect that that I I wanted to kind of make sure I underscored. And and most importantly was your, the the department and where it's been willing to learn, even by, again, seeing this thorough report. But since the incident was last summer. We're a willingness on the department to learn from those incidents. I know we're still awaiting a final report, I think, on last summer's incident. It's an important part that I'm not forgetting that we, are we learning from it? Are we continuing to to whatever became of that? That's what we're responsible for too. So again, I know that that's still, it takes a bit for outside agencies to finish their work. But it is an important part of what we do and 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 learning from and kind of hearing what the final results are. So something I look forward to as soon as that comes. Finally, I I appreciate a colleague, Councilman Alcala's note about training. I think that's, that is the, some of the training that you've outlined and kind of where you want to go is important. I think it's necessary to make sure our officers are understanding kind of what the expectation here is within our group. So as you said, I look forward to hearing up, hearing an update from. From the police standards and training group about what direction they're heading and ensuring that it's it's directionally that the. I think our police officers done an amazing job in the last few years of community outreach, trying to connect with the community. As you point out in your report, it's as fragile as 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 any. As you point out in your report, it's as fragile as 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 anything depending on the incident. But we doesn't mean we we don't stop working and part of that is ensuring that we can tell people the kind of training they're getting. Whether it's through cultural norms or through other sensitivity training or handling deescalating incidents. It is, it is critical and part of the uncomfortable part is, I think, something we've talked about. If people are starting to be concerned about the time their dedication to training, that's probably a good thing. It means that we're learning. So again, I just want to applaud you on 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 the report. And also um, challenge myself or colleagues and you like, we have more work to do. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to sort of um, to take that challenge and see what 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 steps are next. So thank you, Chief, appreciate the the update.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions among our council members, Councilmember Roscoe?
Not a question so much. I had an opportunity to actually go over a lot of this with the chief this morning. But I I do have some comments. I first want to thank the chief and Lieutenant Lukens for the very comprehensive presentation and also Ms. Carlton. I I um, I know she was probably going to know what I'm going to say next, but I this is the, this report was very different than the ones we traditionally received. I mean, I think we're normally used to just receiving attachment seven and talking about just that. But instead, um, I spent uh, the entire night, last night at a ballgame, reading 69 pages of attachment one. And writing copious notes uh, and questions about it. Elaine, thank you. You know, this is your first presentation to our council, but you already took a stab at the issues, the way I like to hear them. Not because of me, I'm sure, but because um, I I often brought up my issues with the way that some of the data is reported. Oftentimes, like I said in the past, you know, the robberies or the rapes, they are reported in the almost a conglomerate like cluster. And they have different complexions within um, you know, whether that be a Walmart. That changes the, just the complexion of what types of theft offenses or robberies that are reported. And you know, oftentimes that might give a skewed um, impression to the members of our community who might think that um, you know, we're we're just suffering from robbery here and robbery there, when in fact, it might be a heightened shoplifting uh, with force offense. But that said, I do appreciate you pulling that out. Because I I just, I like to hear um, that it's it's very different, a stranger rape or a stranger robbery from from one um, uh, involving um, different circumstances. Not that they're any less important to address. But as I said, the existence of one of the biggest superstores in the region with lots of outside parties coming to West Sacramento for that purpose is um, that that can change. The information we receive. And then also just addressing that one criminal enterprise could be responsible for multiple incidences. So you know, you might have a series of of restaurant robberies and and that could be a cluster. That would drive up our our numbers. And I saw that um, it was addressed in the uh, the report. So you know, COVID and and everything that came with it brought an increase of a lot of violence. I mean, a lot of it was domestic violence. I mean, people are in pressure cooker in situations, you know, financially and stress. And and they're all in the same house at a stay at home order. And I, not not to bring light to that because it's not, but I mean, just one can imagine um, what kinds of pressures would drive folks to uh, be in situations that um, would um, would cause, you know, these types of responses. And not saying it's right, but it is what it is. And you know, I I remember getting reports throughout the year about uh, thefts of catalytic catalytic converters and and mail and and then car. Not necessarily the car theft itself, but just breaking into cars or at least just gaining entry into cars for the purposes of stealing stuff in the glove compartment and whatnot. Um, but I I think that those aren't unique to West Sacramento. I think that that's also what we're seeing in other parts of the region. An increase in arson, which I saw was noted in the report. And a lot of them, you know, when I think of arson, I think someone's going to, you know, put, you know, start blowing up a building. But oftentimes it's people that wanted to stay warm and they lit a fire to cook their food or something to that effect. And it just, it it's still an arson, but it's it wasn't necessarily, you know, to burn down and get, you know, some other type of gain or hurt others. But anyhow, um, you know, we've had other discussions like this um, with our council. And we need to address these hard questions and really tackle the challenges facing policing in the future. So Chief, as as our new chief, as one of, as your very first presentation of uh, as chief of the 21st century policing report. Not your very first ever, of course. I I appreciate this direction, the timing is right, the direction is right, um, the information is good. I think all four of us on the council believe that public safety is is if not the most, uh, one of the most important core services that our city supports. And you're changing policies over the past decade with respect to how we as a society address, you know, certain criminal offenses, decriminalization, penalties and punishments. You know, if if penalty is in fact even imposed, I mean, just the restructuring of 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 our criminal justice system. Has really impacted what we are seeing and what you are seeing out there on the front lines and that can't be minimized. You know, and it's complicated. You guys are doing your best and I I have all faith after reading this report that our department is doing its best to to build connection with our residents. And improve efforts to focus on crisis intervention and de-escalation to the best of their ability with the tremendous fiscal restraints. That are faced not only by our agency, but also other agencies. But just to comment, you know, the the, your focus on professional standards and training division. And then the new enhanced professional standards and training committee. The creation of the community outreach and support division that uh, both my colleague Ledesma, Chris Ledesma and I voted in favor of and back in July. And then just the, you know, this effort for police transparency, just so we can, I feel empowered as a community member, you know, to to work with these data sets. That 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 show the ugly and the the positive. Um, that's going to lead to meaningful scrutiny that will cause us to improve. I mean, we can't, we face it, we we own it and that's the responsibility we need to say, okay, you know, that's fair, that's fair. That, you know, are maybe the the interaction could have been done better. How do we train ourselves out of that and get better so that way we can treat our community how they want to be treated? But you know, also recognizing that, you know, the department has been stretched. You know, we have been stretched out of our core services, you know, we talked before about how one officer can be tied up for hours on a call. Or a trip to the to the hospital or trip to the the jail. And and I I wanted to just raise the or renew um, my interest in in getting a report. And I think I raised this last meeting or last um, time our council got together. But just what are we doing with respect to outreach and recruitment of of new and lateral officers? You know, I I, I know we have fantastic officers and I want to retain each and every one of them and recruit and and recruit more. But I I happen to live with a sexual assault detective and who was previously for the last six years in backgrounds for Sac Police Department. And you know, he comes home, you know, late because they're running testing and recruitment and academies. And it's going throughout the year. And I I want to know what, whether we can partner with them to reach our goals of of taking officers or, you know, putting our potential officers through these training academies. We have the resources to hire when we have the recruit available. So let's, you know, I would like to see a positive effort in that toward that end. I know it's probably happening, I just want to know more about it. Also, we talked last week in our strategic uh, planning um, retreat. And and we raised issues such as, you know, what about the possibility of of new and innovative ways of recruiting even our own um, West Sacramento? You know, uh, police um, potentials. And you mentioned it, Chief, it's a day following, you know, arguably one of the most historic verdicts in in this century. You know, it's at a time when many of our own members of the community feel distrust and they feel unfairly targeted by police. And you know, our police officers are feeling unfairly maligned and demonized for just doing their jobs. And and I think it's important to to address that and to take steps toward it's understanding each other's experiences. And um, you know, in closing, I I will say that, you know, I've mentioned it before to our colleagues that last week, I, not last week, a few weeks ago, I reached out to to Chief Strange. And I I had suggested a book that I'd read and I and I was pleased and inspired to find out that he had already read it and found it very provocative. And he had already purchased copies for both his deputy chief and members of the department, or at least a copy for the department to to access. And that book is called Talking to Strangers by Malcolm Gladwell. And it is a very inspiring and thought provoking uh, read. Or uh, I found it essential to just even my role a- as a leader. And I thought that it was fantastic that our chief was already on it and um, moving in that direction. You know, I've seen the work that this chief has done as deputy chief, as lieutenant. You know, working with that promised youth through Invictus Foundation and local programming, boxing camps, football camps, summer night lights, all of the outreach that you've done. And I I appreciate those efforts. Because we all have seen positions uh, hardened and lines drawn in the sand between communities that would otherwise be in congruence with one another. And I know that our police are doing an incredibly hard job and it's a dangerous job as we can see even by the reports um, that we read in the 69 pages. That, you know, the tensions between police departments and minority communities that they serve. You know, whether that's because we are asking police to do too much and asking too little of ourselves. Or because we are um, you know, we we expect them to be social workers, parents, teachers, counselors and to respond to PRAs and and work on the side overtime and miss time with their families. And and we can't, as the chief said, expect perfection out of every single one, every someone's going to make a mistake. And so um, I just, I I want to address that there is a context, it is a dangerous world. And it's not always uh, you know, cookie cutter situation, but we can only find ways of of making changes if we deny the oversimplification and and the rhetoric. And just do it all together, get better. So thank you, Chief. Uh, from the document that I read tonight, I see that the police department is acknowledging um, that they are inclined to move our in the right direction. And live up to the highest ideals and I can't ask for anything more than just that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think some of those comments at the end are are worth sort of a of note. Because yeah, we we will make mistakes at time, but we are, we are definitely, our our folks, uh, the officers out there, working every day. They are experiencing a higher degree of um, uncooperative um, incidents. It's challenging. They get a lot of practice with de-escalation and more so than I wish for them. Um, but I do hope that there will be a new day, uh, at least locally in our city, um, through understanding, through connection. And so thank you very much for your comments.
Well, Chief Strange, I do have some questions. And um, read through the report and I think I need to read it two or three more times because there is so much data and so much information. Um, but just uh, quickly, I wanted to share that I received feedback from Reverend Kimball, who um, was in my brother's keeper. And um, he also wanted to express um, his appreciation um, that he had a chance to go through much of the document. And um, and that he expressed that the um, effort for transparency um, throughout the pages um, was was very good. And it's a good, you know, um, strategy that you're um, approaching this. So with that, you know, I know we'll we'll stay in touch with him um, as we move along and on with the members of my brother's keeper. Because um, they are interested in in continuing to be involved. And one of the things as Councilmember Ledesma, sorry, Mayor Portemla Desma said, is that we still have, we still have more to learn. And this is an evolving process. And even the legislature is taking a look at statutory changes as we um, are looking to address race and equity. And um, proper treatment of people of color. Um, I know you looked at your um, data in trying to describe, you know, those that um, are, you know, pulled over and the people of color, you know, don't have a representation of those in the community. And sometimes it could be, you know, people um, going through the city that don't live here, but um, it is a significant number. And so that, with that, I I um, also know that there are people, you know, during the pandemic that are struggling more so than others. You know, our our essential workers, first of all, have gotten sicker and um, more uh, impacted economically speaking. And that they were also um, given fewer hours to work uh, when things were shut down. And uh, there are like grocery store workers or there are restaurant workers, um, you know, cleaners. So they, you know, the building was shut down, they don't have a job. And with that comes, I think, an impact of domestic violence, um, stress among family members. And um, a lot of youth who were staying at home, we um, are looking, as you said, uh, the child abuse that could be happening. And it's not being reported for teachers who, you know, do most of the reporting when they have eyes on the kids. Um, so that that, you know, we we've unfortunately seen the impact of that um, in um, recent months of a child death. And you know, that was a person um, who, you know, a few of us who observed, who would frequent um, the food bank. But he he would come alone. And so we know that he was in the in the vicinity for a while, but we didn't, you know, we would never suspect it. The situation was going to end up the way it did and it just is heavy on all of our hearts and I know it is in yours as well. Um, along with the other challenges, I I don't want um, to just go without saying that uh, there's been significant challenges. With the amount of of, you know, losses, you know, the tragic losses among those um, with, you know, from our community. And um, also, you know, the the use of force by our police officers who would probably prefer to, you know, de-escalate a situation um, in a way that is safer for everybody. But uh, with that, I think that the training that's been provided um, for de-escalation um, is is been, you know, pretty effective so far from what I've seen. And listening to um, John Archuleta's comment on crisis intervention training, the CIT uh, training that Yolo County has offered. The model that they've um, have looked at is the 40 hour training. And um, one of the Russia, now that I understand, uh, West PD was having a hard time was uh, the manpower was stretched pretty thin. And so um, you know, having uh, taking the training with fewer hours, you know, helped accommodate. Because you have a, and not only a lot of training then, but more training now, you know, that um, you're having to address. And so just figuring out how we can work together, um, you know, in addressing um, the workforce. And um, you know, just making sure that we can balance all of that um, with the police officers and being able to do their jobs as well. Without feeling too stressed out and accommodating um, their schedule. And um, in addition to that, you know, there's the challenges of um, the release of offenders without, with the zero dollar bail. And looking at the um, the, you know, the crime stats. And you know, the, you know, that's going to be one of my questions there is, are there um, you know, repeat offenders in the increase of, you know, the uh, like um, you know, the more aggressive um, violent crimes? Are there repeat offenders from that, you know, from those subgroups there that um, I think might, you know, I don't know if there's a a situation that zero dollar bail might have prevented that from happening. Um, and are we making any progress working with our judge um, in the exchange that we made to address that? I don't know if if any progress has been made to um, to appeal a situation, if we did find one where we wanted to appeal it. And if I can do anything to help out with that, let me know. And uh, reading your RIPA log app and doing the beta test, you know, I want to say, you know, thumbs up on that. It's really important to, you know, make sure these things are are working and appreciate that you've accomplished that for um, getting that done well. And also, um, you know, your implicit bias training, um, we, I've seen how that works uh, and personally, and it's incredibly eye opening how um, effective that is. I know it's um, it probably needs to be done every year. Um, a lot of hours um, to do that because you have to go through scenarios. But I got to say that I think it's a pretty effective um, training. And um, you know, I'm glad you've incorporated it. You know, I was asking Aaron if the um, city has done it citywide. I think it should be done citywide uh, because we have a diverse group of people here in West Sacramento. And um, I think it, you know, if it's not being done, I would recommend that as well and not just the police department. And um, in, I want to also find out a little more on um, your your hiring for um, those of diverse backgrounds, you know. And in, I want to also find out a little more on your your hiring for those of diverse backgrounds, you know, want to see what the status is on that within rank and file and what could be done to increase more diversity here in West Sacramento. If you've heard anything or if there's any kind of surveys or any questions when you found somebody and then, you know, they decided to go somewhere else, what happened? What was the reason for that? What can we do to attract? You know, more diversity here in West Sacramento. And also on the arson cases, I was curious to know, like, if it was related to, you know, encampment or if it was a youth. And just curious to know, among those nine that were arrested, if there was any additional data for that. And I'm just really concerned about the increase of, you know, I saw the rapes there and the robberies and the aggression assaults. It's it's eye opening how there's a huge increase, maybe not huge, but significant enough to to note that I'm really concerned about that. And just the ongoing street car racing that we're seeing all around the city. Which is, you know, you know, I get I get a lot of complaints about that. I don't know if you can imagine, but so and and I know that would require a traffic unit to to help address that or I don't know if another unit, any suggestions on how to address that as well? I know you can't probably, I wouldn't suggest chasing all of the street car racers around town because that'd be crazy, but I don't know if you identify that in the report somehow. But because you're not, you're not doing citations or anything like that, but there's a way to track that and then a way to mitigate that as well. So with that, I just wanted to, you know, put those questions out there.
So, so I, since I didn't write down street car racing yet, I'll start with that. So, yeah, there has definitely been a trend, not just for us, but regionally, maybe even broader than that with that activity and I don't personally believe that's at all COVID related. So I think that's something that that is here now. Our approach at this point is a lot to do with trying to be intelligence driven, so trying to use our our resources and our partnerships across the region with other law enforcement partners and other other sources to to try to identify ahead of time when some of those more organized events are going to happen. A lot of what we do experience are not organized events. They're they're sort of one off, sort of organically appear. And it is difficult because that is one of those things where we have to be at the right place at the right time to address it. We do occasionally are fortunate enough to be in the right place at the right time. I think I was reading a a watch log just this in this last week where that in fact happened and as a result of that, the the driver was cited and his car was impounded due to his street racing. So it is important to us, we understand that there is a culture around sideshow activity, which is what you're describing and it can be really dangerous. It can be dangerous in a couple of different ways, obviously through the type of driving behavior, but also some of those events attract other activity, perhaps sometimes gang activity, other violent crime. And so as far as moving forward, I think the strength of our partnerships is going to be a key in our region. And unfortunately, our existing traffic unit has very good partnerships in that sense. But it will always be for all of us, not not unique to West Sacramento, a resource allocation and a little bit of luck if we don't have intelligence to address those things. Like a lot of crime that does occur were one level of response to crime, but this is where community partnerships are key and and I know community members, as you alluded to, I'm contacted about these activities frequently as well, whether it be through, you know, traditional means of the city or otherwise, and it is understandably frustrating. And understandably, there is frustrations that are pointed directly at the police department for why, about why aren't we doing something about this? And I and I, as much as I can assure people, we we try and we are trying to. I know that's not satisfying to people, but but we are and we will continue to. So. So I think that's about the best I can do with that. I'm going to mention the arson thing only just to prompt Elaine because we'll come back to that, just so she can take a look while I continue to to address a couple of the other topics you brought up. See if she might have the response to that as we as we wrap up here. Regarding our crime statistics, I I agree with you. There's within the the violent crime statistics, there are some concerning things there, although the volume of our violent crime is not huge. So the fluctuations are still concerning. And you raised a really good issue. I'm glad you did. Just as we saw domestic violence cases increase during COVID for a lot of factors that that Councilmember Roscoe mentioned. I I do anticipate and the the law enforcement profession as a whole does anticipate that with the return to school, we will see an increase in the reporting of child abuse cases with incidents that have occurred during lockdowns. And that will also tax us on the investigation side of those cases. But it is something that we are anticipating, you know, so thankful for the the partnership of our professionals at schools that that have those relationships with the kids where they feel the trust to reveal these these harms that have been done to them. But but that does come with with work and and I know that that makes my involvement, frankly, in the Child Abuse Prevention Council that much more important. So I'll plug it right now about, you know, it's a great set of resources for those those folks that are interested in looking for the Yolo County Child Abuse Prevention Council. Its site is hosted on the Yolo County Children's Alliance site. There is a just a litany of resources and the latest resource that was published is it it fits for anyone in the community. You can see yourself in this document anywhere. So I would encourage people to look at that and and help us address what we know will be an issue that we're talking about as we move forward. Also regarding crime statistics, I will say this. So we spent some time talking about violent crime, but you know, there was a decrease in property crime. But I think you'll note in the report that I believe that though there was a decrease, I was a little surprised that it wasn't more considering the lockdowns of COVID. So that tells me that's a number, even though there was a decrease, to still be wary of that number. Because I would have anticipated that it should have been a larger decrease in property crimes with people being home with less people for a portion of the year going to retail establishments in volume. So that's something I think that we need to, we will be watchful of. And that's something where the community really can help us. There is a lot of prevention resource material that we put out and we're trying to exercise our social media platforms quite a bit more, but you know, simple things like do not leave property visible in your cars. It does so much. And I know all of us, your chief included, sometimes forgets and we leave stuff visible in our cars and and unfortunately, people end up with broken windows and missing stuff as a result of that all too frequently. So it is a simple thing to do, but it really does make a difference. If there's nothing visible, people are going to move to the next car generally. So, so just, I I'm watchful of that number. I'm not not super excited about the decrease there because I would have hoped for more. Regarding zero dollar bail, I do believe there's an impact. I I can't tell you exactly how many recidivist cases we've we've had to date. I know the number is in the hundreds. The DA's office does produce a monthly news blast on this, but they cover the whole county's number. So I would have to dig back in with them to the West Sacramento specific numbers. But I know that at least in one case, a violent, very violent crime did occur with somebody that had been released on zero dollar bail. I don't know what the the initial offense was that he was released on, but he did commit a crime and and has since been sentenced to a lengthy stay in prison for the violence that he committed on on a poor lady walking along West Capitol that that he had some some degree of relationship with. So it is something that I appreciate your advocacy for. It is also something, when you asked about the status update, that the, right now, that that effort has sort of transitioned. Our, our Yolo County Superior Court bench has issued a proposed bail schedule. And they are have received public comment on that just recently at the urging of myself and other law enforcement leaders. We wanted voices heard on that matter because frankly, it looks to substantially continue the practice. Albeit, they are setting bail at certain amounts, but they are very low and it's a drastic change from the prior bail schedule. So for those that are interested, I would encourage them to contact the court and learn more about the proposed bail schedule, especially relative to the prior bail schedule. And with that, I will ask Elaine if she wants to pop on and see if she has any comments about the arson statistics.
Hi, Mayor and Chief. I was just looking through them and I can't give you a definite number right now, but the majority of our arsons were either grass fires that seem to be the most frequent right now. There were a couple that were building structure fires and then a lot of trash cans or homeless camps. So I would have to dig deeper, but looking at it, those are the three kind of main topics or primary arsons that I can see for right now.
Thank you, Elaine.
And I and I know he probably doesn't have it in front of him and I would be putting my other public safety chief right on the spot, but I do know that some of those grass fires were, they were arson, straight up arson. They weren't warming fires. We had a couple. Some of those cases may have even been the same person in in a couple of different sites. And so I don't know if Chief Binns has any recalls any specifics on that, but yeah, so some of those were 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 just straight up arson cases, but we do have, we do have incidents of warming fires that do get out of control or or, you know, food preparation related fires that do this do likewise.
Okay, thank you. And then on your hiring of recruits and or laterals.
Yeah, and I I don't have the data in front of me and I apologize if we didn't include that data in our administrative report. But I think as I as I heard the continued request by Councilmember Roscoe about recruitment and hiring, I will make a note that we also include information about diversity as it exists in our department, but also our efforts moving forward.
Okay, thank you. That would be, that would be good to have. Just, I'm curious to know, you know, what if if we're having a hard time hiring people with diverse backgrounds and if there are any barriers, what that is. So and does the Police Chiefs Association do any research on that by any chance? Do you know?
I I don't know if they do, but I think it's worth noting that we absolutely just try to hire the best candidate. And so it is great when we can also find folks that help us reflect the the diversity of our community in doing so. But we also are going to just, we're going to try to hire the best period because that's what the the city deserves. But I will say, I I feel like at least anecdotally in the last year, especially on our civilian position, our non swarm positions where we've had frankly, just more activity in the last in twenty twenty. I was very pleased with a lot of the candidate pools that that I had exposure to and that's usually in our, you know, some of our management positions and otherwise, that we not only had a great degree of diversity, but we had just some awesome candidates in those pools. So some that, you know, we were fortunate enough to hire and others that undoubtedly are going to do great things at other places.
That's good to hear. I'm glad to hear that you're you're seeing some good candidates out there. And also want to applaud you on the wellness program. That's important for me to make sure that our officers have access to, you know, resources, given our challenges that we're seeing out there, you know, with the pandemic and you know, family wise, everybody's been impacted in one way or another. So this shelter in in place has been really hard. And so just making sure that they are taken care of for additional, on top of work related, you know, personal related issues. So thank you so much for taking care of them in that way. And on on the police complaints, one of the questions I have is how they're reviewed. How are they reviewed? Is it is it an internal review or is there some kind of an external review as well?
At this point, the the review is internal and so complaints by policy and by law are required to be investigated. And so every form of complaint we receive is investigated. And then the review that that you saw, the the work product related to that, that that explains the review. And I think in the the staff report, there's a description of the levels of review and I think that was pertinent to use of force and pursuits, but but there's a level of review and scrutiny and investigation that goes into every complaint. There isn't yet that independence of review. And and that is something we're exploring. That's been a council priority that was identified a couple of years ago. And that is a space that we're hoping actually does improve in that way and in the sense that those complaints and the processes on those and probably these force and pursuits, the things that you saw in that document will include in the future, somebody independent of the police department joining in that review.
Okay. And and I only ask because it may help for liability if it was done externally. But I I don't, I, you know, would look to you to get more direction and guidance about that. As well as, you know, what Mayor Protam Ledesma had suggested, so that we can learn more about how to provide support for our residents, community members who, you know, come come throughout the city to feel safe and you know, that there's a lot of more sensitivity, not that I don't think you've been doing it, but that us as council members are making sure that it's getting done. And the only way we can, you know, really achieve that is by getting feedback from the community members, which I think you're you're taking a look at some recommendations for that and and from our discussion that we've had and want to encourage you to, you know, get started on that idea as soon as we can so that we can receive that feedback quickly. And just want to also thank and congratulate Lieutenant Lukens for his promotion and for the work, you know, in getting this report together and Elaine for your, all the all the statistics you're gathering and the information you're sharing with us gives us a lot more information and guidance on, you know, what's happening with the, you know, with the police department. One of the other things I'd like to see, Chief, in the future is a workforce study. On, you know, I see a lot more training and I just wanting to make sure that, you know, the hours of training are 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 put in there, but that if, I also want to see that, you know, if there's additional police officers that we need or you know, the amount of calls, I just want to see if it's, we have the sufficient police force to be able to address all of that. So I don't know if you are familiar with any approaches to a workforce training, a study.
We've certainly had them done here, I think as recent as twenty seventeen. What I think we're looking at moving forward is is definitely a workforce study, but probably something hopefully more comprehensive than that. And to do that, I'm certain that there are firms out there that can help us with that to come in and give us an assessment. And I think it's going to be important that we look at things broadly. Not just staffing versus call for service demand, but but something more comprehensive. I think it's important, and I I spoke to this early in this presentation, that that it's no slight on the work that our staff does here when we ask ourselves the question, is the police department the right intervention for this community issue? And so I'm looking forward to seeking a firm, some sort of assistance that would help us assess not only the staffing relative to the demands, but also the demands themselves and if they fit within the police department or more appropriately elsewhere for the benefit of the community. Additionally, I'd be looking for innovations, especially technology innovations on how we handle things and what kind of tools and resources we have in the hands of our officers. Somebody said it earlier, I think perhaps it was Mayor Protam Ledesma, but there is a a thought, at least where I sit, that part of that outsourcing is about doing the most appropriate thing, the best thing for the community, but but there's also another element that of that and that's manufacturing extra time for police to do police work. And I think that's part of what we have to have in mind through technology, through appropriate shifting of the interventions that were called upon to engage in at this point. And just looking at things in a in a broader way, I think it'll help us actually strategically plan how we grow, in what areas we grow and in what focuses we grow.
Yeah, I I entirely agree with that. You know, everything you just said, I entirely agree as far as what we need to do to, you know, reduce the workload and could be done through technology as well. But I also want to acknowledge, you know, in the hiring of the best police officers, you know, agreeing with you one hundred percent on that as well. And also, you know, the hiring of our two new And also, you know, the hiring of our two new mental health crisis intervention team members. So I've got to, I got a chance to meet them out in the community, spend a little time chatting with them. And they were out scoping one of the sites. And, and one, one of the, you know, you know, as a social worker, you know, intervention is, is incredibly important done by the appropriate profession. And so having the, you know, the social workers or not social workers, the clinicians in this case, they have different background. Being present and teamed up with the police officer is a good approach because I think it provides that training as Mark has also done over the years with our police officers. It's just a very unique perspective. And I think that, that builds into, you know, your, your, your department. And glad that you were able to partner with Health and Human Services Agency. And I know Karen's got quite a few ideas for your department on how to approach things a little different. I know it's time consuming. But one of the things I, I, I want to give a lot of credit to Karen is her innovative approach, which she invests a lot of time through our Mental Health Services Act funding model. I think she, I think she really gets that outcome measurements in, in our, in the investment of our funding, because the challenges at the state level are pretty significant. And when we invest millions of dollars into these programs, we want to see an improved outcome. We want to know what we're getting for our money. So there's higher scrutiny with our Mental Health Services Act program these days because it's a, it's, you know, brought tons more money into the, the county coffers than we anticipated. And now there's just a lot of questions, including homelessness. There's, there's going to be an investment, an infusion of a lot more money, but people will expect to see what those outcomes are. And so what we are challenged with is our neighboring jurisdictions. I could see that, you know, one, one figure we had about eighty, I think it was in 2019. I think we had a biannual pit count and it produced about eighty something people being homeless. We housed about that many. There were that many more out in the community. So that pit count really is not as accurate. I think it's a major migration of, you know, people who migrate from one city to another. And it just continues to, you know, we're, we're very successful in drawing people to our city because of how effective we are in housing them. So that popularity is, is expanding. But my question will be, as you, as you are posing to yourself is whether or not the police department is best suited to address that, or should we take a look at another approach? Because I think it's going to continue to grow. And the, the outreach is, you know, is going to be more directly engaged, you know, with, you know, with Health and Human Services, in my opinion. I think they need to step it up and providing the appropriate intervention for the type of service support demands that we're seeing among those that are unhoused at this point. So, yeah, you know, so willing to work with you on seeing how to transition out some of those services so that you can be freed up to do what we are seeing today is the type of criminal activity and addressing those demands that are being placed on you now. So, you know, I'm here to support you and also, you know, wanted to again, thank the Lieutenant Lukens and Elaine today for your presentation, the comprehensive background. And I will continue to work with you and connect with you all in the discussion of this, you know, the, what West Sac PD and your plans for the future. Rob, look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. And with that, any more questions? Comments? We will go to our council calendar.
Good evening. No reports tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Assistant City Manager Berlin, there, there are some events that does happen. And remember, I was asked, you know, I actually, I'm signed up on Facebook for Earth Day event last Saturday. And then I, and then I had an opportunity to speak. So if there are any like events that happen that where we can have an opportunity to participate, that would be good to know. Just wanted to let you know. So we can, we can jump in and, and provide some support in there for what's happening.
Definitely. Yeah. As things start to open up more, we'll hopefully have more on the list and get you guys those dates and, and information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And City Manager Report?
Yeah. So speaking of events that you can participate in, and, and speaking of the star of the show tonight, Chief Strange. He is, he is official, but you should have received an email, I think a couple of weeks ago for the change of command ceremony that will be held at the Riverwalk next Friday, April 30th, 10 o'clock. It will be a COVID safe event. People were wearing masks and everything, but, but yeah, it's a monumental thing. We don't, we don't do this every day. And so we're looking forward to it. Hopefully you can join us for that. And just, of course, wanted to congratulate Chief Strange on his promotion as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. City Attorney Report?
I have nothing for this evening.
All right. Staff direction from City Council members? I don't see anything. And future agenda, either request by council? I don't think there's anything in there either. And motion to adjourn? All right. Councilmember Roscoe move. Mayor Potemla Desma seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Potemla Desma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
And Mary Gettaro.
Aye. All right, everybody. Have a good night.